Okay, I call this meeting to order at 6:37 PM. Sorry for the delay, trying to get the sound working here.
Worked for me.
Again, saying that in accordance with Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, signed by Governor Baker on June 16, 2021, suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, this meeting of the North Reading School Committee is being conducted with some remote participation. While in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted and a quorum of the school committee will be in person, this meeting is concurrently being presented through Google Meet and by NORCAM to allow public and any school committees who cannot -- school committee members who cannot attend to participate. I'll say for the record that Mr. Buckley, Mr. McGowan, Mrs. Embriano, and Mrs. Boutwell are here. Mr. Poppa Basilio unfortunately cannot attend tonight. We have both our Superintendent Dr. Daley and Assistant Superintendent Connolly here in person. We usually begin with public input, but before doing that, I'm just going to jump ahead to one thing first. Okay, let's come back. We're going to jump ahead quickly just because we do have some members of the public that are going to want to comment, so I'm going to just do one thing beforehand so that we can not have people held up forever. We have a trip proposed to Quebec, North Reading High School trip to Quebec. I believe we have somebody here to present on that, so I will address that first and then we will go back to public comment. Dr. Daley, do we have?
Ms. Cahill, did you want to share your screen or do you want me to do it?
Welcome to Google Meet. Enter the meeting pin followed by the pound key.
So, good evening. My name is Kathy Cahill, and I am presenting tonight with my colleague Alicia Linehan. We both teach French and Spanish at North Reading High School, and we are very pleased and grateful to be able to speak to you tonight and ask permission to organize a trip.
You're muted because a lot of people are on this call. Press star six to unmute. The call is being recorded.
This trip would be for November of the next school year, 2022. Students would spend three nights in Quebec, and I believe you can see the highlights of some of the activities they would be doing. This is something that we have done three previous times in North Reading and has always proved to be extremely engaging. Students really enjoy it. We usually have a lot of renewed interest in learning and perfecting the language and using it at all times, so it really goes hand in hand with our curriculum, and I think it's an excellent opportunity for our students. The price of the trip is something that depends on how many students actually sign up, so I gave you the range from the most expensive if we have, I believe it's 10 students sign up, to the most expensive which, I'm sorry, it's the opposite, the most expensive if we only have 10 students sign up, to the least expensive if we have 30 or more students sign up. And this is a very well-organized trip. We worked with this company before, and our favorite part is that we always have a local tour guide who knows Quebec and lives in Quebec City, who gives us such a wealth of information. There is much historical information that the students work on. We do prep work for our students before they actually go, so that they can really put the pieces together when they're there in Quebec City. So that is what we're hoping to do for this next November.
Okay, thank you very much. Do you have any questions or comments in the committee? Mrs. Embriano.
You said you could give a price range. Do you have that available?
Six seventy-nine to eight forty-nine.
Oh, all right. Sorry, I thought that was a phone number when I was looking at it real quick. Thank you, sorry about that.
Okay, any other questions? Hey, my only question is, what, Richard had one?
Nope.
My only question would be, is the refund policy, for any reason, that the trip can't take place? I know that's one thing that's all in our minds since a lot of trips have been canceled. Do you have, do you know what the refund policy would be? Can they get a refund if for some reason the trip can't go off? Mrs. Cahill, are you hearing me?
Yes, hold on.
No.
We lose that phone again?
Mrs. Cahill.
Just mute it.
Mute it.
Hey.
You unmuted yourself.
Let's just, let's just.
You muted yourself.
End that call.
Mrs. Cahill, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that, we're having issues here. My only question would be on refunds, if for some reason this trip can't happen, what would the refund policy be?
This company does offer our students an insurance policy. I'm not sure of the exact price at this point, although I'm sure we could easily find out which would entitle them to a full refund. Pardon me, minus a deposit. I believe there's like a $50 deposit, so they would get the refund other than the deposit.
Okay, thank you. Richard, do you have a question?
Uh, no, no. It feels like a good trip.
Okay. Mrs. Embriano.
My son and daughter went on it, and they really enjoyed it, so it's well-run.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there more? Can I have a motion to approve the North Reading High School trip to Quebec for November 2022?
I'll make the motion to accept the, or to accept the trip for Quebec.
Second. Any questions, discussion? All those in favor? All right. Passes four to zero. Thank you very much, Mrs. Cahill.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sophie. I'm ready.
Okay. For people on the computer, if anybody, if everybody wants to speak, please just make sure you raise your hand on there. I'll try to check that in case anybody wants to comment. We'll go back to the top, and we will have public input, and just to remind people that are here, public input is limited to three minutes. You can talk about anything that you would like. Sometimes if there's a simple question, we can answer it, but generally speaking, it's not, you know, debate on different topics. You guys can make any comments that you'd like, and we will hear them and go from there. And if you are going to make a public comment, please start with your name and your address. If anybody would like to make a public comment, online you can raise your hand there, and in here you can raise your hand as well. Yes, sir. That's just for NORCAM. The mic's just for NORCAM, it's not for in here, so.
Okay. So, Eric Evans at Three Sandralane in North Reading. And one thing I took away from the last school board meeting, the brief conversation about mandates and what we have to follow and what we don't have to follow, it brought to mind, and I think it was pertinent with Barbara Stat's retirement this week, the oath of office. And if you look at the oath of office, it's basically, "I, fill in your name, do solemnly swear that I will bear faith and allegiance to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and will support the Constitution thereof and the Constitution of the United States." So, my question is, if there is something that comes down to local level that is unconstitutional, don't we have an obligation to uphold the Constitution when those things come down to us? And that's my comment.
Anybody want to address? I mean, I think, my only comment would be, I suppose, but I don't know that we're constitutional experts either on what that is, and so, you know, I mean, ultimately, what we have done so far is follow the regulations, and we haven't gone beyond what the regulations were. And I think many of you were here in August when we had a vote on whether to go beyond what regulations were requiring, and we, on a four-to-one vote, said not to do that, but, I mean, I don't think, it's hard to, without knowing specifically what we're talking about, but, yeah, I mean, if there was something, I think it would be a hard, it would be a hard decision on when, when you pay to fight something, when you just don't do it. I mean, we've had discussions here and there about the different regulations, and we've, you know, at times reached out to DESI to clarify things or to put an objection to certain, certain pieces of it, but, I don't know, I don't know what the full answer is.
Thank you.
Of course. In the back? Thank you.
Thank you. Drew DePatty, Sixth Flint Street.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes. At the previous school board meeting, I spoke out in favor of accountability in a time when our skilled schoolchildren live under the forced policy and curriculum mandates of unelected government officials. Unelected government officials at the national level, the state level, like DESI, as well as our local level, like the Board of Health, have taken authority beyond what is outlined in the U.S. Constitution and our state constitution. Runaway elected government bodies are the reason why we broke away from the British Crown in 1776. In fact, the Declaration of Independence states 27 reasons why the colonists declared independence from that royal government. We could easily double that today with examples. All five of the school board members are elected by voters of this community to fight for policy and curriculum that aligns with the values of this community. No one else is responsible but you. The executive branches of the federal and state government have built up too much power, some of it taken, some of it given by default. But now we must wrestle that power away and put it back where it belongs, into the hands of elected officials like you, and ultimately, the people. The big challenge is, power does not change hands without a fight. That is a fact about human nature. In order to prepare for this battle, I respectfully recommend the school board take the following five actions. Number one, create a subcommittee to study how to put policy and curricular power back into the hands of the school board. Number two, publish the ramifications of rejecting mandates that are handed down by unelected government officials. Number three, allocate dollars to an offensive legal fund to wage these fights in the court system if necessary. Number four, create a standing agenda item for every school board meeting to update the town on every new mandate and every existing mandate handed down from an unelected government body. And number five, hold roll call votes where school board members go on record whether they accept or reject the mandates being imposed on our children. These actions will move the ball forward, create transparency, and begin to transform the way we govern ourselves, back to how a representative republic was designed, that our elected representatives make policy and laws, the administrators implement and enforce them. If the voters don't like what they're getting, then next year we have an election and the people can go in a different direction. I know that sounds old-fashioned, but it works.
Sir?
Charles Kudikivis, 28 Valley Road. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the school committee. I want to briefly address two issues that are important to many parents, including myself, and students in the North Reading public school system. The first is immediately ending all COVID measures in our schools, and the second is transparency and parental choice regarding the social justice curriculum. I'm speaking on behalf of many parents present tonight and many more who could not be here tonight. Before I outline my position, our position, I want to address the perennial scapegoat for these issues, Mr. Riley, the Commissioner of DESI. Mr. Riley is an unelected and unaccountable bureaucrat whose salary is paid by we, the people. Mr. Riley has zero authority to legislate or create binding laws or statutes. Where he has unilaterally dictated unlawful and harmful regulations and mandates, it is the responsibility of this school committee to challenge and even bypass these regulations when it is in the best interest of our children. We will no longer be silent while Mr. Riley violates our lawful civil liberties and rights as parents, violations which are counter to the state, federal, and international law. First, regarding the COVID measures in our schools, it is time to end these in their entirety. We're demanding not only an immediate end to mask-wearing, but also an end to the promotion of an untested COVID vaccine and the cessation of weekly pool testing that perpetuates fear within the schools. Our children have suffered disproportionately when compared to the rest of society. As they sit for hours a day with a mask covering their faces and sit distance at lunch, they see the rest of society doing the exact opposite. Think of the packed football stadiums where people are maskless, and schools in many states that never locked down and suffered no ill effects. Hollywood award shows where adults party together without masks, and states like Florida where the constant drone of fear and mandate is not present. There are ample reports of a mental health crisis among our youth since the pandemic, with suicides, depression, and anxiety all soaring. We are going on two years where our students cannot see smiles from their teachers and their fellow students. We have all seen firsthand the terrible price our children have paid and continue to pay. You have the power and the legal responsibility to immediately end all COVID measures in the school and to tell DESI enough is enough. Second, the Protection of Pupil Rights Amendment, 20 U.S. Code 1232H, provides parents' legal rights to review curriculum and to opt out of certain school activities that parents deem objectionable. While we can opt out of the inappropriate surveys the school uses to collect private information, we currently do not enjoy our legal right to review or to opt out of certain aspects of the social justice curriculum. I will not get into the, all the reasons why it's inappropriate for North Reading schools to teach political dogma to our children, but the fact remains that the singular role of the schools is to teach STEM, languages, civics, and the arts. It's simply not the role of NRPS to train all children in divisive social justice theories. This is strictly about the school versus parent's role in what to teach our children and how the school is overstepping the role. Thank you for letting me outline these two issues, and we expect you to respond and act accordingly. Please remember, you have a duty to uphold state, federal, and international laws protecting our children from harm. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. John Burrett, Two Dogwood Lane. I would first, actually, to break the mood a little bit, I would first like to commend the North Reading public school system for their heroic efforts to keep the music and theater programs vibrant and healthy through this needless lockdown, which, as I understand, has not been the case with other local schools. A round of applause for the North Reading school system. See if I can get through this. My statement will be brief, let wait less than three minutes. Freedom is on the march around the world. You won't find a hint of this on any of your news feeds, so you're going to have to trust me. Spend one hour on Telegram watching Disclose.TV or Konoka with the Great videos, and you will understand. Freedom is on the march for two reasons. First, average people like me and the people in this room have awakened to the sinister goals of the Great Reset and the New World Order. On a local level, we will no longer stand for unelected tyrants who are drunk with power, making rules that go against our constitutional freedoms. We want the COVID regime to go away immediately. We want our bake sales back, Mr. Bracy. We want hamburgers at football games, Mr. Bracy. And we want to have a say by public law in the curriculum being pushed down to us from D.C., period. Tyranny is the first reason, but the second reason is closer to our hearts. The data is in, and it is overwhelming. The jab, the shot, is far more deadly to our youth than COVID, by a lot. Telegram, Telegram, go to Telegram, is full of videos, with new ones arriving every single week, of children with Bell's palsy, with myocarditis, with stroke symptoms, and much worse. There are many, many videos on Telegram of athletes perishing all over the world, on the field of play, around the world. Over 108 FIFA athletes have died in the last seven months in their twenties from heart attack. Look it up, it's true. It was stated on the floor of the French Parliament. The jab is quite simply a weapon of mass destruction for our youth, and for those who don't experience near-term catastrophe, the data is also in. Repeated boosters will destroy their God-given immune systems and render them equivalent to AIDS patients, mark my words. The fact you are even promoting an 80% vax rate, which is over two times the national average, means one of two equally disturbing things, Mr. Daley, Dr. Daley. These two things are equally disturbing. Either you are woefully unaware of the deadly consequences of the jab when compared to COVID, or you are aware and you choose to promote it nonetheless. Those are two equally disturbing possibilities. I don't know which, and I'm not going to ask. While we hear the position every day, "We're just following orders," so do the Nazis. The Nazis just followed orders, okay? When those orders violate state, federal, and international laws, up to and including the Nuremberg Code, it is your duty to find ways to bend and break those orders. Regulations are not laws, mandates are not laws, they're not statutes. No one is going to jail if they break a D.C. mandate. This is about upholding the law, but it is even more importantly about protecting our children and protecting the lawful rights of parents. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Looking online. Okay, well, thank you everybody for coming and expressing your thoughts. We don't have a student report tonight, I don't believe, or did you?
I don't believe so.
Is Jean on?
Nope.
Okay. Go in. Dr. Daley, would you like to give the COVID-19 update?
Just one quick question.
Sure.
The last time I was in this room in August, we could see how many people were online attending the meeting. Is there a way to do that tonight, or is anybody watching or online?
There's 15 people.
15 people?
Yeah.
Well, there's 15 signed in, but that includes ours and the recording secretary, and so there's.
Probably less than 10.
Yes. There's a handful of people.
I'll tell you, I can tell you. One, two, three, four, five.
Thank you.
And then us.
I have one question.
Yep.
If, Dr. Daley, if DESI comes back and they don't change any of their policies or their recommendations this year, will you override, or can you override what they recommend and do what we feel is best for our children?
Sure. Can I respond?
Yeah, you can respond, Dr. Daley. Go ahead.
So, we've been, we've been pretty clear throughout the whole, the whole process that we were for choice, for choice with masking from the outset. That was my recommendation, that was the school committee's vote. If you recall, back in August, we got a lot of pressure back and forth, I mean, it was a very divided issue. So, when you say what the parents want, not every parent is in agreement. I'm sure everyone understands that. I think it's different now than it was a month ago than it was in the summer, right? Certainly different than it was last year. What we are doing all along is following the recommendations. I know that there were some, you know, we're not, we're not going to get into this too deep, but the Commissioner is, he doesn't make the decisions, he has to present them to the board, and the board is elect, they're appointed, the entire Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, just like this, is appointed by the governor, who is elected, okay? So, he has to present it to the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, who makes the rules during a state of emergency. We are required to follow those mandates for everybody, and it's not North Reading, as you can, you can tune into any, any district in the state. We do not have the authority to go against those recommendations. What we can do is we can continue to advocate and to speak out for choice. I do that every time I have. I have an association that speaks directly with the Commissioner. I'm very vocal in that group about this always should always be about choice. We had parents that spoke to us in August who articulated, one of the parents who was probably the first parent to really speak out against masks, after that meeting, wrote to me and actually countered her argument and said, "Keep the masks on," because this parent really recognized the dangers of linking masking to vaccination. And so, that was something that we've talked about here, and that's something that we've advocated for, and I've advocated for many times with the Department of Ed, to unlink any connection between vaccination and, and masking. And that most recent extension of the mask mandate, which we discussed last meeting, unconnected those two things, which I think is a positive step forward. I'll say for myself, if the numbers are what they are now, last week, or the beginning of January, where that mask mandate was supposed to end, we had 457 cases in January. Remember, again, that you've got a lot of people, teachers, who are going home to children and parents, people are concerned, right? That is not the time to say, "Let's just unmask now," okay? Our numbers are much better every week, and if we keep trending this way towards February, I will, myself, I will, if they extend this or kick it down the road, I will reach out to the department, I'll write an open letter or something, just to say that we should be thinking about choice, because that's how, that's how I feel, and I think that's, you know, whether the committee feels that way or not, that's how I feel. I will say this, though, just to be clear, and I've said this before, I don't think they're going to kick it down the road, I do not think that they're just going to keep extending it. The one thing that I'm not sure on, there's data that after a vacation, after travel, numbers spike up, and so I'm not sure what they're going to do, because the date right now to unmask is right after February vacation. So, I'm not sure what that looks like, but no matter what they do at that time, I will, I will speak to that. Unless the numbers are through the roof or something happens, remember that all these things are being done out of, you know, I know that not everyone, you know, it was said that, that the virus is less harm, is, you know, less harmful than the masking. Not everyone agrees with that. And so, the, you know, the elected officials are making decisions based on what they think is best. So, again, I would speak up to that piece, and I would also say that, you know, if there is any kind of a connection to the vaccination again, that resurfaces, I would, I would speak out against that, because I think those two things should be separate, as they were in the original guidance from, from August.
We're not going to keep going back and forth very often. I'll hear from the new people, then we'll do one very quick thing, Mr. DePatty?
Patty.
But what, DePatty, but wait, let's, let's talk to the people who haven't spoken yet, so, I think Jody's hand was up first.
Sure. I just, Jody, 14:53, I just wanted to ask, isn't there some masking rule in this room right now?
There is. People are supposed to have masks on.
So, are we not, are we enforcing it, that of the kids, somewhere in this room?
And we can ask people to respectfully put it on and follow it, but that's about.
I guess my, my main question is, is that what we're doing with the students as well?
I hope so. Dr. Daley, could I ask you a quick question?
Wait, one at a time, please, guys.
Just a quick question.
One, one at a time, please. Please wait to be recognized, we're answering. Do you want to respond to what happens in the school, or?
To what happens in the school? So, it's expected that students wear masks. There are students that have exceptions to the rule because of special education needs and whatnot. This forum, this particular forum is a public forum. Under the regulations, there is an amendment to the law of a public meeting which allows for virtual participation, which was put in act, which was enacted just for this very reason, that some people may not be able to come in person and may not be able to wear a mask or to comply if they are in person. And so, you know, again, the rule for the buildings, for all events that the school is in charge of, there is a mask mandate that's in effect. So, if people are, you know, not doing it, I think we're asking them to do it, and if they, they're not doing that, I think we're respecting that it's a public meeting and that discourse is important. We would ask people to, you know, to stay at least six feet apart. Similar, similar to a town meeting, if someone showed up and wasn't able to wear a mask due to a medical reason, that's what we would ask.
Okay, I just, my question though, is that, how, just, I don't necessarily know that anyone here claims that they have a medical reason for not wearing a mask, and there are people who put their tag because we're not for medical reasons to wear masks. So, I'm wondering if, what is happening, if a student just doesn't wear a mask and has no medical reason not to, is there any steps that are being taken? Because I think as a parent, we should know if that's like an optional thing, wearing masks when we're making decisions for our kids.
Yeah, again, it's, it's not an optional thing that we can, that we, we have not had to address that all year. Everyone has been respectful, and the students, nobody wants to wear a mask, the students have been compliant throughout the year. I'll say, I'll say that. It's not, I don't think anyone's happy with it. We've had very vocal discussions going back to the beginning of the pandemic with, with members of the committee and myself on a personal level and on a professional level. I don't think anyone's happy with it. I think we're all ready for this to all be over, but we are following a mandate, and I know that there's. Again, it's, it's not an optional thing that we can, that we, we have not had to address that all year. Everyone has been respectful and the students, nobody wants to wear a mask. The students have been compliant throughout the year. I'll say, I'll say that. It's not, I don't think anyone's happy with it. We've had very vocal discussions going back to the beginning of the pandemic with, with members of the committee and myself on a personal level and on a professional level. I don't think anyone's happy with it. I think we're all ready for this to all be over. But we are following a mandate. And, and I know that there's, as I've said in the past, that we are not able to, you know, that the Department of Ed decides how many days we go to school. They decide whether we have to do this, whether we have to do, we, we are, we are a body of that group. We don't get to decide and pick and choose what we follow. Now, again, if it was something that was really dangerous, we would stand up. But I know that there's a lot of people that feel very strongly about mask wearing. Again, it's mask wearing against the dangers of COVID, which people have very strong opinions about. And that's changed, I think with Omicron, it's certainly changed. We've seen so many students, 457 students in January get a case of, a positive case of COVID. It's very different than it was throughout the rest of the pandemic, where we saw very little transmission in school when masks were worn and a lot of transmission at home or in other activities. So it's very different now, and I think that's...
Okay. Ma'am? Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, Janie Lard, a woman from San Diego. A quick question. Because we had brought up the issue of the testing and all the positive cases. Is there any discussion limiting the testing at some point, focusing that towards on hospitalization instead of homeless rather than hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of cases that are positive despite vaccination?
Can I, can I address that? So testing is not something that's required. Some gentlemen said earlier about ending all these mandates. There's no testing mandates. Everything, the only thing that's a mandate at the moment is a mask mandate. So testing, contact tracing, all those things, those are, contact tracing is what the Public Health Department has to do when there's a positive case. And you're a nurse, I believe, right? You've addressed us in the past, I believe. So you know that well. The vaccinations, offering clinics in town is just, we, we've never hosted, we've never acquired. We've just done that. And the, the people, remember, again, people want the vaccination. Not everyone, but the people that want it have expressed a lot of gratitude that we've offered that with a friendly face and a friendly location. A lot of students with special needs that are uncomfortable going somewhere, we're very thankful that we offer that on campus. So again, no one's telling anyone they have to do something. We're offering that. With the, with the testing, again, our teachers' unions asked for us to provide testing. Our students have asked for us to provide testing. We have, you know, 30% of the population participating in at-home testing and in pool testing. So for the people that want it, it's an option. So we're, we're not looking to stop something that a lot of people still want.
And I appreciate everything that you've done in that degree, that offering the vaccines in the Commonwealth to people who want them is very good. My concern is that all of these numbers, including the Board of Health's tracking, tracing, generally to contain something that's obviously not contained. I think we're going to have more people that contracted COVID at this point than have not. And so, you know, we're looking at something that, and, you know, some metrics we've used in the past, say, we have a whole lot of people showing up in the hospital dying from some illness. And, you know, where those numbers are going. So I'm just thinking that perhaps we're defeating the fear by mentioning all these numbers if those numbers aren't really resolved and there is a policy that...
Yeah. We've, we've laid down, you know, we made it, you know, not a policy decision, but a communication decision. I don't email every time there's a case this year. We changed that. Obviously, January is a total anomaly. We had five cases in October. I was giving a monthly update. We pushed it to the dashboard for that very reason. We didn't want to create that issue. I try to email out once a week, once every other week with the numbers, people that want to see the numbers. That's what we're trying to do. Some people don't want to hear it, and some people are, are very upset if they find out there's a lot of cases in their school and they weren't told. So we have, again, we have to communicate to everybody, not just people that feel one way or the other.
I'm not opposed to using those numbers to use the policy.
Yeah, I don't know that we've done that.
Okay. Last couple of questions?
Thank you.
Yep.
Dr. Daly, you, I may have miscommunicated something, but I'll try to clear it up. You sort of said, you know, all these commissions in DESI report up to an elected official, obviously the governor. I think the point I was making also to myself is that we actually have three branches of government. We have, you know, the lawmaking branch, legislative, executive branch, which implements and executes, the judicial branch, which resolves disputes. What I was bringing up and some of the points I was making is getting the legislative branch back involved, getting the judicial branch back involved because we have a runaway executive branch. You know, I don't know how many employees there are in the Commonwealth, 50,000, 100,000, or 2 million federal employees. All those people are running around making laws and mandates that we have to live under and they're not accountable. So just to say that they all are put up in the government, that's me as a branch, sir.
Sure. I was just clarifying, because I was clarifying that the commissioner is not an elected official, which is true, but he works for a board that is appointed by an elected official. That's, that's, I was just clarifying.
One branch of government, correct.
Sure.
Sir, you had a ques, a comment too? Could you state your name and address?
I have two to ask you, though.
Thank you.
So I have a question for Dr. Daly, or more of a question of some advice that you would give to a 10-year-old who asks the question. Dad, we went to the Celtics game Wednesday night. There were 17,500 people there. Half the people weren't wearing masks, half the people were. So about 8,000 were, 8,000 weren't. None of the players were wearing masks. None of the referees were wearing masks. If you've watched an NBA game lately, they've been told that the coaches aren't wearing masks. But on Saturday night, the same 10-year-old goes to the North Reading Amesburg game. There is maybe 500 people in the building. All the referees have masks on, the coaches have masks on, all of the players have masks on.
Yeah.
How would you go about explaining to a 10-year-old to decipher what is proper,
Sure.
given all of the things that you just stated? The infections are up, the positive rates are up, and all of these things?
Sure. So I, I could, one more? The, this question comes up a lot. It's come up in my own family. The difference is, and this is the great lesson, the public schools of, of America are, they are for all students. And you cannot choose to go to school. It's, it's a constitutional right to go to public school, okay? There are students that are medically fragile. There are students all across the spectrum who have the right and they have to be able to come to school. We can't tell someone, "You can't come to school because it could be unsafe. Do something else," okay? Going to the Celtics or the Bruins game is your choice. You can choose to go or not go if you're in that scenario. It's a private thing. You're paying money. You're a vendor in a situation. Different setup. And at different phases of this pandemic, we've all, we've obviously had rules where you couldn't do those things. There have been mask mandates in different cities and places. There's a, there's a requirement right now at the Celtics game that you can't go unless you're vaccinated. Am I correct?
Correct.
That's not a requirement for the schools, but that is a requirement. And so I think that's why they were, got away from the mask scenario. So I think that's the lesson, is to say it's different in schools. It's different in private schools. We went through this all last year with, well, what about the, you know, private school or Catholic school? They don't have this, that. That's not the same thing. You don't have, there are not the same laws governing the ability for a student to go to school.
10-year-old was interesting because he has a cousin that lives in Salem, New Hampshire, that hasn't worn masks all year. New Hampshire, they don't wear masks.
Yep.
They don't wear masks.
I have a friend that works there.
But he says, "You know what? I live in Drakeville. Why do I have to wear a mask when my cousin in Salem, a town who doesn't have?" What do you tell him?
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Okay. Moving on, I think we're to COVID-19 update. I think you've given some of this now, but do you have any other update for us, Dr. Daly?
Just mostly about the, the end of, you know, contact tracing, which has, which has ended at all schools for all the students, which I think is a step forward towards making this more of an endemic rather than a pandemic, which we saw as a good sign. Students and staff that are interested in doing at-home testing are now able to do that. So instead of being told, "There's a positive case and you need to do this or that, quarantine or whatnot," we're taking tests and anyone that has symptoms is able to work with the nurses. And we, our nurses are very proud and very thankful for this change. It was becoming completely overwhelming trying to keep up with the number of positive cases. And, and we discussed that.
Do you know what percentage opted into the, to take the test at home?
About 30%.
About 30%? Similar, most of the people that were doing the pool testing and...
Yeah, about 50% of staff, 30% of students. I haven't, I haven't run exactly whether they're duplicates. I can do that for next meeting. I can check against the list to see who it is. I would imagine it's a lot of the same names. The other thing that I just want to update that I share with the community is about the waivers, which, again, is, is still connected to 80%. Every district in the state, the only districts that have been able to have a mask optional to return to that is a district that's above 80%. We are not quite there yet at the high school. But as I shared with everyone, if we do get to that threshold, we would certainly be putting in for the waiver. I checked with the, my understanding, because there's not a mask mandate in town, there is not a requirement for us to get approval from the Board of Health to change that waiver. And I guess my question to the committee on this would be, do, what, what would the process be? Again, I'm going to keep everyone informed and transparent. My thing would be if we hit that 80% number, I would like to be able to have the authority to sort of write to the Department of Education for the waiver, and then I would bring that forward to you for, for the decision. Does that sound like the right process or...?
I think so.
Yeah. I mean, I, I certainly, I mean, we voted in August to follow DESI guidelines. It was specifically at that time a specific guideline, but we, I think we voted to follow the DESI guidance. And, you know, I, I wouldn't see why we, we would vote again, you know, differently this time. So that makes sense. I mean, I should say, people may change their mind about that, but that, that is the vote that is on the table at the moment, that we would follow the guidance, so. I guess my question is, would we need an additional meeting to apply for the waiver or to enact it? Or would we be able to do that if we hit the 80% and then DESI approves it?
I think we can apply for the waiver. Anybody, I mean, to the extent we want to discuss it, I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of applying for the waiver if we're eligible. Janine?
Yeah, I would agree.
Diana?
I'm nauseated that it takes time to the vaccines, but I want the masks off, so whatever it takes.
So that's, so there's four of us here. We all are okay with doing it and...
How do we know that people are reporting that they're vaccinated or not?
Yeah. That's a, that's one of the...
So we may be over 80%, but mom or dad, you know, you're not thinking about it. You know what I mean? They didn't have, does the kid bring them the card?
So I, sure, I can...
Really? How does it even work?
Yeah. Sure. So that, the, when, when people are vaccinated, they are in a system through the state database. So you have to go through a process to opt out of that system. Or if you're vaccinated in another state, that may not show up. So I can send something out. Maybe this is what I'll do as a next step. What I, I don't want to inundate the nurses with duplicate information that they already have. But we already have, like I said, almost 80% of the students at the middle of the high school are in the system. It's the same system that shows that they've got all of their required vaccinations for school. So it's not something I can see. It's not something the principals can see. It's only nurses are able to see it. And for parents that have inquired, I've shared the link out that explains the privacy piece of that. And, but if they, if they did choose to opt out, in that situation, someone might need to tell the nurse that they are vaccinated. So it's actually, if I may, more likely that we're undercounting than overcounting. At least that part of it would suggest that we're undercounting, that there may be people who opted out but got vaccinated. There could be. But again, if I, I mean, we're so close that I think, I don't want everyone to start calling in, but I think I could put it, my next update to just middle high school. I'll say if you, if you chose to opt out, or if you're vaccinated out of state, notify the nurse. Otherwise, do not. Because I don't, we don't need the nurses on the phone all day long with people that they already have in their system. But again, the numbers are very similar to the town numbers as well who collect this. So I'm not feeling like we're way off in that. I guess, I guess the point is, it doesn't sound like we're, it doesn't, it feel like, yeah.
It would meant the numbers are probably a little better.
Yeah, exactly.
Dr. Daly, if you had one vaccine here and one in another state, would that be counting automatically or not?
Not necessarily, yeah. So I can, I could clarify that with people as we, I can send that out tomorrow, just to clarify.
I'm just curious, because my, my son had, had one in, one in Massachusetts, one in New York. And so, and I think the school knows he's vaccinated, so I think we reported it.
We can, we can kind of, we can, we can put that out tomorrow.
He is in the test case, Chuck.
We can, we can put that out tomorrow.
Will this waiver be for elementary schools too, or just the middle of the high school?
Yeah, the elementary schools, if they were to get to 80%, would have the waiver.
So that's not going to happen, probably. So my first grader
Yeah.
has never been to school one day without a mask on.
Yeah. It's a shame. The pandemic is a terrible thing.
Because we're on two years, but this is over. It's over.
But again, we can take them...
Okay, guys, 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 but with all due respect, public, public comment is over. We're talking, if there's a question, we'll, we'll answer that. Yes.
My taxes paid to you, all right?
I don't get paid anything, sir.
Whatever you do.
He's a, he's a, both on...
Get out. Wait until November. To flip whatever's open seats to get anyone who's voting against our kids out of this.
There's not even really any evidence these masks are really...
Okay, guys, guys, we, we have to continue with the meeting. And so we're, we're trying to give the update and what's happening. We're trying to continue with the meeting, sir.
So if I could just one last thing.
Yes, go ahead.
Again, February 28th is the day when the, the mask mandate can be lifted for everyone. Hopefully that is the date. That's what we've said with everyone. It should, we should hold that it ends then. And that's what I said earlier, if that, if it doesn't end at that point where the numbers are reasonable, we, we should, we should, you know, I, like I said, I will write an open letter to the commissioner to question.
So you're going to write a letter? Then when that doesn't work, then what?
It's amazing that you're doing it after the school vacation. I think it's on purpose.
Yeah. I, like I said earlier, I would think that they should have picked a date two weeks after the vacation because...
Maybe two weeks before. If that was done on purpose. I didn't realize that until you said it.
Yeah, I, I...
If that was done on purpose, it was done to keep the mask on the kid, which is gross.
Well, it's the day, it's the day right after vacation, so, yeah. I'm not, I'm not sure what, what they're going to do, but that is the, that is the next...
DESI meets on the 15th, correct?
Okay. So the, the point right now is then, right now, February 28th, we believe the mask mandate will expire.
Yeah.
The current, the school committee has not put in mask mandate beyond that in, in effect.
There's nothing that needs to get...
So there's nothing, there's nothing that would need to be repealed. Many, many committee, many communities have their additional mandates on top of that. We do not have anything here. To the extent that we get to 80% in a building, we have said that we are going to apply for the, for the waiver. And again, if February 28th comes around, it very well may be before we hear on, before we get to 80% or, you know, here anyways, but that's where we're at right now.
I'll just repeat for these folks that what I said last time, I, I did believe that they, they were going to overturn the mask mandate in January. I really did. They were showing us things in December to prepare us for that part of it. It, it could have been presented by some anti-mask groups, quite honestly. I think they were really helping to, to spread that message and to talk about all the things we've talked about tonight, not seeing kids' faces, the, the social, emotional. They're, they're well aware of this. When the numbers spiked in January, they, they couldn't do that. To the point that they didn't, if they were just kicking it down the road, they could have, we met with them in three weeks in a row in December, they could have kicked it down the road at any point. They didn't. They put it off till January. When the numbers were higher, they kicked it to the end of February. So I'm hoping that, I've said this many times, that this is the last extension of the mandate, so.
Dr. Daly, sorry, just have one, one question and maybe one remark. We obviously know that, you know, numbers go up, down, what happened, right? And it seems like even though, you know, all of our kids are wearing masks, that doesn't affect it positively. So whether we wear the masks or not, numbers go up and down. So that's one thing that, that is bothering my mind, like, how can we make a correlation, you know, that if you wear a mask, the numbers are not going to go up and you're not protecting yourself, where, you know, the numbers are still going up or going down? So it leads me to the, you know, to the conclusion that masks maybe are not effective, right? Based on what I'm hearing. And then the second comment I wanted to make, it made me like a question, right? I have two kids, I know people that have, you know, kids the ages of middle school and high school. Pretty much most of the people that I associate with on a daily basis, all of their kids have had COVID one way or another. And their symptoms were sniffles at the, at the worst, right? Maybe a little bit of a fever or something like that, but yet we continue going down that path, which doesn't make sense to me. It's very frustrating to be honest.
My daughter's school, and she's in college now, she's in North Reading. And I took very children to the school. Have had seven suicides this year, it's the quality of seven, this year. These kids ninety-five percent vaccinated, they have been remote for two years, crushments locked up and open. And so you don't think, you think you're immune to that, you think there's something that hit these kids at some point? We, we need more, these kids need more.
I think, I think everyone agrees with that.
Okay, so let's move on. We have boys hockey overnight trip. Dr. Daly, I think you're presenting, Mr. Johnson's not here tonight?
Yeah, he is at the basketball.
He's at the basketball game.
So on behalf of Mr. Johnson, I'm just sharing that, he's saying that he's writing to make us aware, the boys, boys varsity hockey team plan to stay overnight in Falmouth on Monday, February twenty first, twenty twenty-two, so they can participate in the Jeff Hayes Memorial Tournament sponsored by the Sandwich High School Hockey Boosters. They're scheduled to play their first game at four P M. on Monday, February twenty first, at the Gallo Rink in Bourne, Mass. They will also play in February twenty-second at either four or six P M. Team will travel and stay with their parents at the Seacrest Beach Hotel in Falmouth. Team is expected to arrive back in North Reading with their parents on Tuesday evening, February twenty-second.
Questions? My, my only question was, it says they're going to stay with their parents, are all the parents able to attend? Or if, if a parent can't attend, do we know that all the parents are able to attend? And if not, what would happen?
I, I believe they would, there are chaperones that would be there from the team and they would be able to stay. I can check with Mr. Johnson on questions.
Okay.
I don't know the answer to that one.
Just because it says they'll be staying with their parents, and I just wanted to make sure that if for any reason a student, I, I wouldn't want him not to be able to go if.
Sure, yeah, I'm assuming if he wrote that, that that probably means that, I just don't know for sure that they're all going, but I'm sure that they're all accounted for.
Okay.
And I guess I'm a little confused too, is it, is it, are they being, are they traveling there together as a team?
That is the plan, yep. So just because it's an overnight trip, there's a request for.
Okay, any other questions? We have a motion to approve the hockey trip to Falmouth.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the hockey trip to Falmouth for the dates of February twenty-one to return February twenty-two. Second?
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, pass this four to zero. Food service workers side letter agreement. Mr. Connolly, would you like to present on that?
Yes, thank you. So in your packet this evening, there was a memorandum that kind of presents a side letter of agreement that would essentially open up the food service workers' contract to make changes sort of before the official expiration of that contract, which is June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. So the, the administration had met with the food service workers and felt it was prudent, given the various changes in, in market conditions and increases to the minimum wage that has occurred since the contract was last negotiated about two and a half years ago to institute these changes, which we hoped would be retroactively effective on January first, twenty twenty-two. So certainly the food service workers have been working very, very hard. Certainly they're, they're, they've been asked to go above and beyond since the beginning of the pandemic. And just like many, you know, North Reading food service, you know, school employees. And we felt this was a appropriate decision to recognize not only their efforts, but really to recognize the, the changes in the, in the market conditions and the, the increase to inflation, as well as the minimum wage, which really could not have been predicted when this contract was negotiated in, you know, really a, a pre-pandemic timeframe. So we ask for support of the full committee to, to recognize and allow the administration to move forward with this side letter of agreement. And then the contract is due to expire in, in June of this year. And we will begin negotiations separate from this side letter in the very near future.
Yeah, thank you. And I'll, I'll add a couple of things then, and then we should also talk about appointing somebody to negotiate the next contract as well. So this was brought to us, there's, there's been a couple of open positions in the food service for, you know, this year. Have both of them been filled now, or just?
So there's one, we, we were able to fill one position. We still are trying to fill that last open position. We had, believe it or not, we had some hopeful applicants in, unfortunately, it didn't work out. So we're kind of back to, to still trying to fill that last position.
Okay, and, and, and one of the challenges we were facing was, with minimum wage going up, we were starting our food service workers below minimum wage. And it is, technically, it is legal to do that in, you know, for some reason. I don't understand that, but we didn't think it was the right thing to do since the minimum wage had changed. So that is really the impetus of this. I think the open positions showed us very clearly that we needed an adjustment to their contract. And so that is the point of this.
Correct.
You know, which I, I know that the committee has been, was fully behind, so. Any comments? Questions? Okay, so I will ask for a motion to approve the side letter agreement. There's a recommended motion here.
I'd like to make the motion that the school committee vote to approve the side letter of agreement dated December third, twenty twenty-one, to amend the provisions of the food service worker contract. Reach for the twenty, twenty-two, sorry, the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, or should be twenty-one, twenty-two.
Twenty-one to twenty-two, yeah.
Fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, effective January one, twenty twenty-two, as recommended by the administration. Second? Do I need to say it is retroactive?
I think the contract was FY twenty.
Yeah, that's what, that's saying.
Okay.
It's a three-year agreement, covering those two fiscal years.
Do I need to say that it should be retroactive to?
No, I think it's.
Just by the fact that it's January?
Yes. Okay, we have a motion by Janine, a second by Diana, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, pass this four to zero.
Great, thank you.
Very much, and then I know we have to begin the negotiation soon for the next food service workers' negotiation agreement. I know I, that was the first contract that I was part of negotiating last time. I don't know if anybody else has a desire. I know you've, you've negotiated one or two as well. I don't know if anybody has the desire to negotiate it. I'm happy to do it again if nobody wants to, but.
They're a nice group.
What was that?
They're a nice group to work with.
They are.
And it's been a nice process the last couple of times, absolutely.
We did it years ago.
Yeah, right.
That's right. All of the groups are nice, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to imply any other group was not.
They're nice, I don't know about the rest of them.
I, I am happy to do it again if nobody else would like to, but.
I hear happy, and I'm thinking that's your, you're the guy.
There we go, I mean, let's be, let's be very clear, Mr. Connolly does all the work and I sit there, so. Okay, so I guess I will do it again.
All right, I'll let you know some available dates. We've been in touch and we're just having settled on some dates, so.
Okay.
Well, you know.
Yeah, let me know and I'm happy to participate.
I was just gonna say, typical guy not here, you make good.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, the only problem about that is.
Yeah.
The only problem about that is we do have an upcoming election, and I don't know if it's going to be completed before that either. That's, we get a couple of potential lame duck candidates, so. Okay, moving on to school committee goals update. Who is leading this discussion? It's you, Janine, and Chris is not here?
Chris is not here. As we had talked last meeting, we were going to get an update on, each one of us was kind of given a goal. I believe you at the kindergarten, you were, were working with NORCAM to get more notice out to the public, I believe, something of that.
To envision a, a, a better streaming, a better streaming method of, of, of doing the streaming, but yeah.
Okay.
Are there any, well, why don't we just?
I'll start with my update, which is not brilliant. I am going to, I have not yet reached out to Glenn Kutter of the Mass Association of School Committees. And for the life of me, I can't remember what it was that I was, it was for professional development within the school committee. And I know we wanted to reach out to other surrounding towns and see if they wanted to come to a virtual meeting with it. But for some reason, I had it in the back of my mind that it was going to be, what is our legal responsibility towards the budget? That's what I thought it was, and I couldn't find it and I couldn't remember, so.
You're saying it's not done?
I definitely have not reached out to him, I can't say, hey, let's set up a virtual meeting because I want to have a topic discussion about, I don't know.
The committee will engage in one professional development presentation related to school committee responsibilities and authority under mass general laws.
All right, so kind of like the discussion that just happened in public meetings, this would be a very good.
Correct.
Okay.
Right, exactly.
One thing of note that I, that I want to share too is that, you know, there are entire school committees filled with people who ran last year on an anti-mask ballot, and they're still not able to overturn. I mean, it's not a, you know, so you'd have to change it at the state, you know, the legislative level to authorize school committees to make these kind of decisions in a state of emergency. But everyone's frustrated, I can understand that.
Yeah.
But I think, I, I think, I think this actually came up in the campaign last year where, you know, there's a lot of talk about what our responsibilities are and.
And what we have the ability to actually change, you know, can we stand up against this, can we not? Are our hands tied, that type of thing, so.
Yeah, having those discussions is a good thing to do, for sure.
And again, I think, I think even beyond just masks, I mean, that the discussion was. Because we've had, we've had.
Curriculum and everything else.
Yeah, I mean, a couple of years ago, there was a proposal to put something in a student handbook that regulated off-campus activity.
Right.
And there was a question about whether or not the school committee and the school adminis, school district should really be regulating things that happen in a private home on a weekend. And so, you know, I think that's, I think when we were doing our goals session, the discussion was generally speaking about the roles and responsibilities of school committee members and the school committee as a whole, so.
Okay, well, now that I remember, I will definitely reach out to him. And I know I, I wanted to reach out to you to see what surrounding towns would be interested in something of that nature.
Okay, you can reach out to some superintendents and see.
Yeah.
Diana, what was yours?
It was kindergarten and, you know, in terms of an update, and I cannot take credit for this because this is obviously all of us trying to push for this, and Michael Connolly in particular, really trying to look at the numbers to see what's feasible. But in our budget subcommittee that we just recently had, it looks like if we can keep going down this path, our goal would be that, you know, kindergarten would be free for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. So I think right now, although it's a very preliminary budget, we've dropped it again for this year, and we'll continue to do that until we get down to twenty twenty-five. So, you know, we're going in the right direction. I, I do think that we're behind the curve in that, obviously, as we've all talked about, but, you know, making some strides.
Yeah, but what, two, three years ago when we first were?
Yeah, it was like over four thousand dollars.
Yeah, and it was, it was not sustainable for us to take the one-time or, one-time, two-year split to kind of get it in that area. And we just didn't have it in the budget to do it, so.
Right.
It's definitely moved along.
We, we were at four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, and we were, I think, the third highest in the state.
Correct.
For full, for full-time, for full-time kindergarten. And so we've tried to make it a goal to slowly would, you know, figure out a way to put that into the budget so we don't have to rely on those fees. And again, it is thousands of dollars of fees that help offset the cost of the program, but I think then the budget that we're going to present later on, I think brings it down to twenty-five hundred for this year, if we can get that. Last year was thirty-five hundred, so.
That's great progress.
Again, something that we have to continue to work for, and I know in finance planning, we brought it up a couple of times as well. And, you know, we put it as one of the, one of the priorities in the budget. And when we start talking about the budget in coming weeks, well, people will see it in there.
I mean, I think the idea is, as Mrs. Melwell alluded to, is that the phased-in approach allows the budgetary impact to stay something that's a little bit more achievable about, you know, about a hundred thousand dollars annually over the timeframe, as opposed to having a, you know, a five hundred thousand dollar impact in one particular fiscal year. So that, that's the plan, and I think with, you know, if we can kind of stay to that, I think we'll be able to achieve it.
And I think the municipality side appreciates the fact that we're taking a chip, a chip, a chip, instead of just trying to take a big chunk of money, because that takes away from, you know, their budgets too, if we were to do that.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, and it's important to note, when we talk about in finance planning team, I mean, I think they, there are budget, there are budget challenges everywhere in the town. But I think when we talk to the select board members, we talk to finance committee, I think everybody is behind the idea of offering full-day kindergarten for free, because, you know, we talk about it's a broader issue, it's a broader equity issue. It's, I mean, there was only a total of eight kids signed up for half-day kindergarten this year. And you just worry, and I've said this before, I mean, my worry is that, so those are the students that maybe can't get it for free, but at the same time, they're really struggling to afford it. And, you know, I hate to see that. I mean, when, when it was a choice and half, half the town decided not to do it, it's one thing. But when it's just a few kids, I just worry that, you know, we're singling up people that can't afford it. And we should really try to get rid of that, so.
And, and I think, yeah, and I think things have changed over the last fifteen, twenty years, where it was a luxury before, but now it's really, I think people think of it, you know, I think, you know, the education world thinks of it as a requirement now.
You look at those kindergarten frameworks, right? It's, it's, there's a lot, and they build, so.
And they start, that's the start of the building blocks for, for all of the, that happens after that.
And having a full day to be able to spread out some of the curriculum also helps as well, so.
I mean, the, the push at the state level is for free pre-cath.
Right.
So we're, we're just trying to get to pre-cath, free, free cath.
Free.
And then we can talk about pre-cath.
Mr. McGowan?
So I.
Diary done?
No, I just said, okay, so I was gonna.
So I was supposed to be working on the virtual meetings, especially, so I, I guess there's two parts to this, right? And NORCAM's done a really nice job with their feed, including the, the, what's going up on the screen and, and whatnot. But I think where, where we have room to improve is on the presentation virtually. I'd like to get to a point where we're not logging into the meeting ourselves, that we have one camera, you know, one webcam set up out here that shows all of us so that we don't have to be logged in and just have our faces here and, and just have a little more coordinated approach. We have, we've talked about some things, haven't really taken any steps yet. I don't think you guys have, beyond what you've done with NORCAM on the, on the NORCAM side. But that's, that's the goal, and I think that we should be able to make some progress there, so.
Clearly, this isn't working the way it was before, right? Phone didn't work tonight as an example, but when you've got people in the audience, like, nobody at home was able to see that through this feed. So we gotta just continue to do this. And we don't know what's going to be allowed after April, but I do, I still think that it's, I'm hopeful that there can be something that's still allowed legally to, to, because I do think that you will have people that aren't able to engage in public, that are able to do it if it's a virtual option. And I, I hope, even if the committee is not allowed to engage, if we can still engage the public that way, I think that's what we're hoping to do. So we have identified some technology that might be better than the, the speakerphone that we can look at. That's something Michael's done a little research into, that would involve some of the camera piece, but we can continue to work on that as well.
I mean, and just, just to comment on that one, I'll say, just so people understand this, I mean, there's a few people still here and a couple of people online. The governor's order allows school committees to have meetings completely virtually right now, and it allows school committee members to be virtual. Normally, you have to have public access for the public, and normally, the only way that a school committee member could not be in person is if the select board has authorized that, and there's a, and there's a quorum in person. So we've talked in our planning meeting, and we really want, we feel like through the pandemic, it's been, we've been able to have people attend virtually that would not have been able to attend if they can't, you know, if they have young kids at home, they can't come here in person. So we like the idea of continuing that. The way the current law exists, the chair can authorize it to be, to be, you know, on NORCAM, it can authorize it to be a Google Meet or anything like that, so we don't need authority to do that. There need to be a change to allow us to, you know, for any of the school committee members not to be in person. But the key thing, I, I think we've all really wanted to open up the access so that, you know, in the future, if you have a third grade student and you want to watch the budget, or you want to hear about what we're talking about with full-day kindergarten, and you want to log into it, we want to keep that access open to the public, but trying to talk about the technology of how to make that happen.
Regardless of the pandemic, just separate from that, just to, just because you, it's, it can be hard for parents to get out and get into a meeting. It's a long, it's a long commitment, so.
And my, my goal this year was to revisit solar. We talked about solar a couple, a few years ago, we put out a request for a proposal. We accepted a proposal, and then we, we went to town meeting, got the approval, all the approvals needed to do solar. And then the contractor that accepted the proposal realized that he completely messed up the proposal and said, oh, I thought you guys were paying for the solar panels, and it required him to pay for the solar panels. And so it washed everything out, so, you know, we kind of looked at it, and the, the next highest bid was just a very low bid. And so we sort of put it on the back burner, we wanted to look at that again. I had a meeting with Mr. Connolly earlier this year to talk about really what were the challenges, because he kept saying to me that it used to be better, it used to be, we'd get more money. And, you know, we kind of talked a little bit about how some of the tax incentives have changed. But completely unrelated to me doing anything, I happened to run into somebody who's a lawyer that works for a company that does solar. And that company also happens to have won the bid for a consortium that North Reading's a part of. So because we're part of the consortium, if we wanted to, since they've, they've won the bid for the whole consortium, any consortium member could actually use that company for solar if we wanted to do that. So they are doing a free proposal, or a free proposal for us to just get an idea of what's happened. What I understand, the big, the big change from then, from before is that the challenge in the, one of the challenges in the past was that you had to use the energy, and, and we get really cheap energy here, so it didn't really save us that much money. Or they had to buy it, but the problem was they didn't always need it.
So one of the new, new things that's been being done is they build a huge battery that saves the energy. And then they sell it to, you know, RMLD through the battery. So that's what they're doing a requ, uh, a proposal for right now. They're going to just give us an idea of sort of what we would get for it. You know, if we wanted to do this. And I think they're going to do a couple of different things because they said, they showed me a preliminary drawing that shows all the roofs here. But also talking about if they wanted to put on carports. And I don't know if you noticed, but did you see where they've put, I think they were putting a carport right when you drive up on the right-hand side there before you get to the gym? Did you see that in the, in the drawing, Michael?
Oh, no, I didn't. I looked, I thought it was just in the parking lot, but it was more.
No, I think it was up to the right more, like.
Was that more like a land, more like a land, a ground array?
Yeah, I, I don't know. I don't know what that was, so we'll have to see what it was, but.
Well, if it is, um, I forget, I think I told you and Patrick, it's actually, you get more bang for your buck, so to speak, if you have it on.
A ground array.
Yeah.
It does produce more energy.
Yeah. So I thought those two big noles would be perfect to do it.
Yeah, we had looked, so that was part of that proposal. It was the hill, that hill that you come up to the right. As well as the middle school, high school roof. We didn't, at the time, we weren't pitching the parking lot carport array. But, um, yeah, I mean, I think, I, you know, I think it was just, at the time, the real estate lease situation for the next lower bid, um, was in that, you know, 25 to $30,000 range, which was a, a, a big construction project to bring in that amount of revenue. So I think, I think we just, as Scott alluded to, let's see what this, um, you know, contractor, provider, you know, can come up with. Um, and they were a little bit a part of the conversation a couple of years ago. Because they did work with power options and they did streamline the whole process of contracting with, 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 um, because you have that, we're part of that consortium. And at the time, they were saying, you're, you're really looking at around 25,000. So all along, I kind of thought the, the RFP process at the time was going to kind of certify that or solidify that. And then we got this, what appeared to be almost like the too-good-to-be-true proposal that, that didn't really pass the sniff test. And then we kind of discovered, and when we, we thought we had a home run, and then discovered that, that, you know, there was a misinterpretation of the bid. So, um, but I think it's, I think it's important that we continue to investigate it. So I appreciate, you know, Scott looking into it.
Yeah, I mean, and again, it may, it may end up being that it's 25 to $30,000 and we can decide if we think it's worth it or not. But we wanted at least take a look at it. Um, the, the other piece of this was seeing if there's any way that our, our, our local rep, you know, our state rep, um, Brad Jones, could help with anything if there were certain tax considerations or things like that. But I think we need to first see what, you know, this group proposes, which, I mean, we've laid a lot of the groundwork already. And I think that's one thing that this company really likes. We've already gone to town meeting and gotten the approvals that we needed. And so however we do, and if you recall, when we went to town meeting, we kind of did it as, we thought it was going to be one thing. But we, I think we got the approvals for either way.
We did, correct.
We can say, do we have a structure in place necessary?
We can do a behind-the-meter as well as a, a real estate lease.
So we, so we already have that approved. We also had already done the request for proposal, which was on the, the school district website. So they could just look at what, what was already out there. And we're already part of this consortium that, the consortium's already done the request for proposal, and they won their request for proposal there. So because of that, if we wanted to do this, it could be a very expedited process if we wanted to do it, so.
And the other good thing, I think, is RMLD is, and is much more, um, part of the process. They've been, you know, we had, we did have the presentation by RMLD last spring, I believe it was last March. So they, they certainly wouldn't be surprised by this. They know it's something we're looking into. Um, they, they're continuing to, to kind of stay on top of the market, but they have a lot of our data in terms of the size of our, our roof structures, the size of the arrays that could be available out there. So I think if a company does come forward with a feasible proposal that makes sense, I think, I think things would move faster because RMLD is well-versed in what, what we'd like to do. Whereas before, they were kind of playing catch-up a little bit when we did the RFP.
I, I think that's one, actually what they're waiting on right now, if I recall, was this company is waiting on to talk to RMLD.
Okay.
So they're already doing that because they really need to understand what the, what the amount of energy that RMLD would be interested in buying is.
Yeah.
Because they don't want to put roof arrays up there that create energy that RMLD's not interested in purchasing. And so I believe that's really what they're waiting on. I think they have the designs of what they could do with a couple of different options. And they're trying to talk to RMLD about how, how that would work and whether or not they can, you know, whether or not they can take that much energy.
Yeah, that's.
So I think that's what they're talking about. And I think RMLD has some upcoming times where they were going to be doing this. And, and this particular group has already worked with some neighboring schools, school districts as well. Although the battery things, we, we'd be one of the earlier ones using the battery.
Yeah.
Most of the other ones have been using the energy themselves, so. In any event, that's where we're at. I don't know if for this school year we'll get it done, but we'll see. I mean, as soon as we hear, we can bring it to the full committee to, to look at, but that's where we're at right now.
Great.
Did Chris touch base with you as where he is on his?
Chris is going to reach out. We're going to meet to talk about his goal.
Okay.
What's his goal?
His goal is related to engage in the community and.
Equity diverse.
The last one with, um.
It's, uh, actions number three point one.
Okay, perfect. We'll get an update from him the next time, I guess. Um, okay, school committee goals update. No vote on that needed. Superintendent goals update. Dr. Daly?
I'm really not going to be able to, uh, I will share this, but I'm not going to be able to, uh, view the slides on the computer, so. You're going to have to listen. Unfortunately, I can't do both. Um, I will try to make this brief because I've talked a lot more than I thought I would. Just very quickly through the process, Chris and Janine are the, on the evaluation subcommittee. The, uh, I have a student learning goal, um, which, which, um, is about aligning NRPS 2025, the school improvement plans, the administrative goals, the department goals, and educator goals, trying to have a synergy of everything coming together. Professional practice goal about continuing with year three of the new superintendent's induction program and networking with, uh, other superintendents through our various associations. Uh, four district goals, one around communication, one around COVID-19, one around diversity, equity, inclusion, and the development of NRPS 2025. So essentially, I'm on a one-year cycle. This is the formative mid-year. And, um, what the, the committee would need to provide feedback on is whether I'm on target, off-target, or not yet started on the goals. I would hope that I, I can demonstrate that I've at least started them all and hopefully I'm on target. And Gina, I don't know whether I would present tonight. I don't know that we're going to discuss it. But then would they just provide you that information offline?
I believe what we do is we put it on Google Docs and then they put there, and then I put it all together. Or Chris, I forget which, which way we're doing it.
All right.
Yeah, that's how it would do. And then we would just, uh, report on it whenever it's all pulled together.
So just, I'll go quickly because there's a lot to cover. But, um, you know, we've had mid-year school improvement plan updates. I really wanted to take this on a little bit myself because this is my goal that I've been working with them. So instead of having them present or them collect their information, I am just going to share that with you. And I'll, I'll move quickly. Um, but really working on this piece to change, in some cases, what they've been doing for a school improvement plan. Really making them about goals for the future. And, um, as you know, some of them had a lot more to change than others in terms of the way they were, um, designed over the years. And so we've really made quite a lot of progress this year. And really trying to get our administrative team to connect their role in the, evaluate their goals as administrators with their school improvement goals. And then also connecting them with the department. So I think you can see that in what I'm going to show you here. I talked about the synergy. We've changed how we've used the, the school visits. We focus on current topics, but also focused evaluation. For example, last month, I went to all the first grade classrooms across the district with the principals and talked about what we were seeing to look at them together. And the next step in that is to get all the principals or teams to go into all these different, um, areas. Because you can learn so much about your school by viewing another school. And so overview for the three elementary schools, they have some overlapping goals. Lot of work on reviewing data from ELAMCAS to iReady to DIBELS for, for the English Language Arts, from MathMCS and iReady data for mathematics. We have interventions at all three grades. And as we're talking about interventions, we're transitioning to MTSS, which you're going to hear a lot through this and through, um, NRPS 2025. We have, um, the professional development to lay the foundation for what is MTSS, the mass-tiered system, um, the multi-tiered system for support is what it's called now. Um, a focus on what's called tier-one instruction, which has really been our focus this year for all of our teachers. So very quickly, tier-one instruction is what you would see in a classroom every single day. Both special ed students and regular ed students working together with a classroom teacher and in-classroom supports to access the curriculum. Tier two is when we say, okay, there's something, um, that students need additional help with. If they need some, um, small group support or pull-out support for mathematics or for ELA, they may work with a teacher or a support specialist or reading specialist. Similarly, for mathematics, we have our Title I tutors that come in and work with our folks. And then tier three is that next level where it's the most intense need, very specific, somewhat individualized with the needs. And so having that system throughout the day so that it's not a one-size-fits-all approach is really what we've done. But again, our, our first focus is making sure that that, um, that tier-one instruction, what happens every day, is accessible to all students. And so a big part of this whole piece is the, the need for academic interventionists. So we have part-time interventionists this year working at some of the grade levels. We really have that need for the full-time interventionists at each school, and you'll see that through the budgeting process to be able to provide those different supports at the different levels. Another big goal that's been, uh, playing out at all of the schools, we've examined what it means to have a faculty meeting. We've all seen the, the, you know, the memo, you know, why couldn't this have just been an email, right? Why do we have to sit through a meeting? So I think we all took that on this year, all of our buildings. Some have been leading this for a couple of years. Others have tried it differently this year, but everyone's, um, tried something a little bit more this year and, and to really change how they're using their time together. And then from the technology piece, um, we, we continue to have our smart boards installed in all of our elementary classrooms. Just a few highlights from the Batch Elder. Um, their goal around, um, communication, that they have been proactive in communicating with families. Lots of great student data's been collected about progress and shared out about, with all these different pieces, um, with iReady and MCAST. And working on focusing on social media updates in real time and trying to reintroduce the parent-family involvement. So I'm sharing some of the areas that I think, you know, when we wrote these goals in June, um, we didn't think that we'd be in a position right now where we're still having difficulty, um, having in-person meetings the way that we still are at this point in the year. And so hopefully, that's something with the second half of the year, we can continue to work on and have more in-person family involvement at school as that moves along. So, um, also to the, the cultural competency piece. So really trying to, again, specifically work with those alignments of vision and goals and school improvement goals and district goals. Working with, um, cultural competency, what that means at each school with a positive climate and culture. They have the spotlight program at the Batch Elder, which has been very successful in trying to carry that over now to all of the conversations that they're doing. And they're also looking at how they can, you know, look at their classroom and school libraries to include more global cultures. And the Universal Design for Learning, our UDL district initiative, ties into that tier-one instruction. To try to make sure that we're designing all of our lessons, um, in ways to also include, um, cultural competency. So when you design it from the outset, um, how can we be sensitive to, to all learners? The Hood School, in addition to the things I mentioned earlier, they're also, they have a Title I tutor and a data specialist that they're working with on a regular basis. Um, they're meeting all the time, all that, uh, the, you know, with those groups. When I speak about the students in tier two or three that are accessing, um, that are, that are getting time with the interventionists, that's fluid. So they're always looking at data and determining which students need the additional support for this particular aspect of the curriculum and keeping those groups fluid. And so that, that's really up and running. They're working with, you know, the, we, we've heard of guided reading and best practices in, in the language and reading side and trying to come up with, you know, the similar kind of experience on the mathematics side. Again, that's where the interventionists would help us in the future. Their meetings, you know, what they've done, the, the Hood is one of the schools that I think's been a leader in some of this, the concept of a professional learning community is just a typical, you know, different than a typical faculty meeting. They have all these different groups that are running. Some of them are, are multiple teachers involved and some are, uh, sort of like independent studies and then they report out. But they're talking about professional learning, the science of reading, social-emotional learning, STEAM, MTSS, ReadAloud, diversity, equity, inclusion. And they've been working on their school-wide town meetings. They're reviewing what it means to be safe and responsible. And they're going to get to respect, which is the next. They've also had some opportunities for some great activities. They did the Fun Run, the Parents Association. They had, they just had the two-two-two where everyone wore two socks or two ties. And I saw a great photo or video of Mr. McKay, Dr. McKay, uh, taped to the wall in it with the kindergarten first grade class. It was really pretty fun. They had a, they had a, uh, great, great community building there. They've done some outside enrichment with High Tech High. And, you know, Dr. McKay is really focusing on that cultural proficiency piece as well, looking at different subgroups. Talking about how teacher goals are aligned to cultural proficiency goals. And then also different holidays. Uh, he, he shared with me that there's more students in the building now than ever that, that celebrate Ramadan and trying to understand best how to work with those families and make sure that, um, we are, we are, um, celebrating and recognizing all the different holidays that our children experience. The little school, um, a couple of areas of focus, social-emotional learning, family-community engagement. So there's going to be some surveys sent out for social-emotional learning with students. The Adjustment Counselor, this certainly goes for all the schools. We've had the one Adjustment Counselor for the three schools. Um, certainly, we want to build towards a model where there's an Adjustment Council at each school to adjust some of the, uh, concerns that we've talked about this evening about just students' social-emotional wellness and, and the supports that they need. But certainly, um, she's been very well-received at all the schools. And they've received a grant from Subaru, um, which they were able to get, uh, new books with, uh, for their classroom libraries. So that's been very exciting at the, at the little school. They've also really been trying to get into some of that family-community engagement. Similarly, they've been slow to introduce and reintroduce parent volunteers. But it's been, it's been a little bit tricky with some of the, um, the regulations. And the principal, you know, is trying to do some virtual coffee hours and wants to do more of that in the spring. And then with the professional culture, um, similarly, as we spoke to, um, you know, trying to, not just through the faculty meetings, but, um, but through all of our meetings and, and interactions, trying to have, um, that professional learning community idea. So instead of, uh, it being driven by the principal, it's actually shared. So the reading teachers, they come together. They had a school-wide goal on writing that the reading teachers and the ELA leaders presented back to the faculty. And so to really, like she says, really trying to transform, uh, the way those meetings. And that's been very well-received by staff and very productive. Principals are all very excited about these directions. The middle school is sort of a leader with, with MTSS. They've, they've done their pre and post data. They're moving, they're also involving science this year as well to look at in addition to ELA and math. Um, they've implemented the Bridge Program this year and it's been very successful so far. Um, that's been a, a very successful program at the high school, um, for students to, uh, now have that opportunity at middle school. And it certainly, uh, is a game changer, as we've heard from parents over the years, um, for their child when we're able to offer those, offer those programs. And so, um, also looking at goals related to school climate and collecting data from staff and students. I believe there was a survey in the fall and there will be another survey, uh, to measure some growth and change over the year. I've kind of joked with everyone though, that, I mean, this is not a time to, to survey. Everyone is frustrated right now, as, as, as we all know. And so we do want to get those survey, uh, pieces about the things we're doing. And, uh, hopefully, very soon, we'll be able to be, um, moving forward into the spring. So again, the school committee very much connected with the alignment piece. She's done a lot of work to really, um, update and change her plan to get in alignment with our, um, our district goals. And she's, um, Dr. O'Connell's been a leader working with our data specialist and an outside consultant to create some interactive graphics and tables. But she's sharing how we share that data back and forth with the educators to make real-time decisions. And she's really, you know, the middle school's been a model for this with the other schools in the district, similarly with MTSS. Sort of a double-edged sword because they've been doing something called MTSS for several years. Now that we're doing it at a district level, there is a, a bit of the middle school modeling that. But there's also some adjustments that need to be made because they're used to doing it the way they've done it. And we're sort of taking a deeper dive and making a few shifts. So there's some, uh, communication changes there. So at the high school, there are five goals. Um, this is a big shift from where we were in the past. And I just want to break you through just quickly to show you how this works with all the departments. First goal is to measure MTSS strategies, um, to support individual student learning, provide, uh, personal growth and development and social-emotional well-being for students. And the departments that are listed below have also now made a goal, um, that is aligned to the school goal. So how do we achieve our school goals? It's by making sure that our departments, within the departments, individual educators have goals in their classrooms. And so that's how we know that we're achieving, um, our goals. And so there's going to be data and measurement of whether we've been successful with this when those presentations are made in the spring. The Improvement Plan Update for High School Goal Two is about the instructional model in English and mathematics. So this is tied into Mr. Lepretz's principal goal as well that I'm evaluating him on. And the English department and the math department have a focus on this. It's really looking at, again, those are our two MCAST subjects, and they've developed a new model that they've been piloting. And this is sort of multiple year, trying to assess how this will look over time to see whether we see some improvement from this new model. With Goal Three, again, this is the principal's educator evaluation goal. By looking at blended learning best practices and how technology can advance and, you know, basically what we learned from last year that we can carry over and continue to make some changes, everyone having a device and all those pieces and what we learned from hybrid learning. So you can see all the departments that have also taken this goal on as well. And then two other goals here. One is about the implementation of senior final exams, which was discussed and piloted a couple of years ago. And so that is going to continue for this year. And then Goal Five, this is another one which was presented to you a few weeks ago as sort of an update. Phase one was the, looking at the advanced placement model and coming up with some different pathways and possibilities. The second phase of that is really a deeper dive into the equity issues around AP and looking at which students are enrolled in the classes. Does everyone have an equal opportunity to advance placement? Is there anything in the data that's concerning, why? And then what could we possibly be doing that may be putting up barriers to having a more diverse representation in that group? So that's a multi-faceted goal that involves all of his curriculum leaders and then quite possibly a team of interested stakeholders as well to dig a little deeper with that. So this is where we are at this point in the year. They've done quite a bit, and they will then provide updates at the end of the year as well. Just for my other goals, they're not going to all be as long as that one. That was my long one. You know, as I mentioned before, I'm year three of the new superintendent's induction program. There's virtual sessions, there's some in-person sessions. This has been really helpful to me, I have to say. And it's very hard for me to sometimes commit to these meetings because there's so much going on every day. But when I do step back and hear how it's going in other districts, I always feel good about our community, about our leadership team, about our teachers, about our parents. We're in a good place. Everyone's frustrated, but in some ways, it's good to hear just how common all these issues are to everyone. But working with my coach and mentors, something as simple as, you know, I introduced a, an article that was how to lead, how to lead when your staff's exhausted and you're exhausted too. And my hope with that was that my leadership team would get to the point where they were saying, okay, what are we going to do to take something off the plate of all our teachers, right? I never got that far because all we got to was I needed to take things off their plate. We only got to the first part. And I didn't even think that. I thought I was doing something to help the teachers, then I realized I have to do something to help my team. And so I did back off on something I had asked them to do as well because that's what we really needed. But very valuable things that I'm getting out of that piece to share. Again, all of these initiatives are supported. Most of them are connected to things happening across the state or across the country. And through all of these different superintendent's associations and the superintendent's MASX group, we're able to learn a lot more about those initiatives and to tackle some of those topics and to share resources. We've also developed, you know, professional development activities. We've really taken a hard look at our human resources and working with our DEI coordinator through SEEM and UDL through SEEM, those two coordinators, to really take some steps to update our professional development. The first step of all this, though, is looking at ourselves and our own practices, you know, and to think about, are there any biases that we have or judgments that we make that we have to think about in a different way? It's a very challenging process to look at yourself in the mirror, things you've done for 20 years, and just look at it through a different lens. So it's been some pretty powerful work that we've done together. Goal Three is about NRPS 2025, which I've been updating us on regularly here, meeting with the leadership team in the summer, the central office team. And I think I've provided a lot of public updates on this with you. The budget is updated and aligned to the NRPS 2025. You'll see goals that are driven by that, and the final document will be shared with the, a draft document will be shared with the community, and then obviously, the final version after that. So that is coming soon. Goal Four is around COVID. Everything that we've talked about is a standing agenda item. Just to refresh that, you know, we had, you know, a reopening plan, memorandum of agreement, all of that work this year. Worked with our union leadership through all of this, all the challenges with their safe environments, grants that I worked with Michael on that we were able to get to support. Meeting regularly with the nurses who've done fantastic work this year and all of the updates with the constantly changing guidance and updates and requirements for what we have to do with our students to keep them safe. And the implementation of all the different testing programs that we've had this year, again, the, it matters a heck of a lot for the people that want them and to take advantage of them, and it's a lot of work. And I say that we're one of the first and active districts in a lot of these areas. We respond quickly to it. If it's something, it's a resource that's available to us, we're able to offer it to people, and the people that take part are very appreciative. And again, I'm meeting basically weekly with the town leaders and all the boards to keep up that communication and to have no surprises with all that's coming down the pike. So that's been very important. Goal Five is about communication. This is one that has been so interesting this year because if you remember, we said that we're in a good place, and then we tried to figure out what's the right way to communicate. It even came up tonight through some of the discussion about how to communicate out, you know, to really try to push the dashboard more, to not over-communicate, but still to keep people that are seeking the data in the know. And so the dashboards have been very, very challenging to keep up to date with the amount that's coming in every day. And that's something that I've, you know, I maintain that myself, and I have to pull that in. I can't even tell you how during the crunch time right after January, there was someone made an error in the dashboard, and there were all these duplicates. And I, like, I had to weed all that out, and I didn't want to over-report, but I wanted to stay current. I mean, it's, it's been a lot. But I feel like, again, people really appreciate that it's updated daily and they can see exactly what's going on. Again, communication, we're going to have the School Safety Summit on February 16th, which is coming up in just a couple of weeks. And we are in talks with NORCAM to provide additional insights and communication. So we have plans for a show. It's just been, like everything else, just tricky to coordinate and navigate. But we have sort of the scripts for the first two series that we're going to be putting together. And then the last goal is just about the social justice and equity for all. I think there's, you know, certainly a lot of work to do with the community to continue to understand. You know, we heard tonight about social justice curriculum, which I don't even know what that is. And so I think that's where we need to make sure that we understand what concerns are. And I think, you know, when we did have our forum last summer and we talked about what we meant as a district by this, I don't think anyone disagreed with it. But certainly, there is some buzzwords out there about what it could be and what people don't want it to be. But we do have a DEI inclusion coordinator from multiple districts, working with that person. As I mentioned, the hiring practices. But really, our administrative team at this stage is just trying to figure out what the next steps are, how to develop supports for staff who have questions around this. And, you know, to look to what that professional development looks like for next steps with all the stakeholders, so to keep working on that. So there's a lot, there's a lot going on. This is what we're working on at this time. I don't know if you have any questions.
Any thoughts, questions?
So you're saying you could take on a lot more things?
Sure. That's all I do. So this is, these are obviously related to, you know, the work that we're doing every day. Some of them are improvement goals, some of them are stretches, some of them are, you know, I have not, and I'll say similar to the principals, I didn't want to do this group virtually. And I may have to, or I may just try to do something in person. But I really didn't, I think this work's too important to not do it in a way that we can come face to face. But we will, we will try to get to that. And I think that's sort of what, with Chris's goal as well, to try to have a district-wide committee that just comes together on this topic. I thought it was, again, when we did the vision to work for NRPS 2025, we had a lot of various viewpoints coming together, it was very powerful. We're going to try to get back to that place and recreate that.
Should we change NRPS 2025 to like 2028?
Twenty, twenty thirty eight.
Maybe we, maybe we need, maybe we need to rethink the naming convention there.
Yeah.
And not put a year on it, but.
Yeah. When you, all your years are like in quotes.
Okay. Seems like you're on target, but we'll do the assessment. And Janine, you're going to coordinate with Chris to get that out to us for the next meeting? We're going to have this, or is that what we're doing?
I'll have to look back through and see.
March seven, okay.
Because we do have a date set. I just don't remember what the dates are.
Well, for this, I mean, for this, tonight was the presentation, so whenever you want it. But I'm just saying, the next school committee meeting is March seventh.
It's March seventh, yeah. And I think we usually present it in April, so that would.
Whatever you'd like to do.
Okay.
Okay. Great, excellent.
Thank you.
Good job, Dr. Daley. Okay, minutes, we have one set of minutes to approve, January 24th, 2022. Anyone want to make a motion on that?
I will do that, as I used to, until I didn't show up for a meeting.
Wait, were you there for that one?
Yes, I was here for this one.
You were here for this one, yeah.
I was the April, or the January 10th one, I wasn't there. I'd like to make a motion to accept the January 24th, 2022 open meeting session. Gosh, I can't talk, as written, sorry.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Passes four to zero. Budget update, Mr. Connolly, we have a couple from you.
Great, thank you. So this evening, the January budget report reflecting activity through the end of January was included in your packet. Really, there's not a lot of kind of new information and new drivers at play from the December budget report. You know, certainly, we remain in solid financial standing about midway through the fiscal year. That is in large part due because we were able to leverage some of our year-end available funding last year by taking measures like prepaying special education tuitions beyond the level that was budgeted, rebudgeted, which has provided some additional flexibility when we have had some new costs come up in that area of outside tuitions and so forth. This year, we've been able to address those within the budget. We've also been able to really leverage the additional grant funding that we've gotten this year. There's been a variety of grants, some larger that are kind of more entitlement grants as part of the COVID-19 pandemic, and then some kind of small ones that we've been keeping our eyes out and being aggressive and applying when we've been notified or we've seen things posted, and we've been successful in being awarded some of those grants. So that's certainly helped us leverage that funding and shift funds away from the general fund more towards this additional grant funding that's sort of available this year. So that's why some, certainly some expense line items appear to have larger balances than in the typical year. We've certainly had some unforeseen costs arise. There's certainly been, certainly in the area of buildings and grounds and maintenance, there's been some boiler repairs, some HVAC repairs. It's been certainly, over the past few weeks, there's been some snow removal costs. This past storm, believe it or not, was a little bit tricky. It didn't, as small as it was, it actually kind of extended, and it was a tricky cleanup. So we've certainly incurred some overtime. But everything we've been able to do is we've been able to manage within the budgeted ranges. We haven't had to run any area in the deficit on the expense side. The payroll side, things have certainly been within the budgeted amounts. There's been no major surprises. We've certainly had some leave of absences this year that have come up. Nothing out of the ordinary that we haven't forecast or based on historical data and trends that we don't budget for and substitute, in long-term substitute accounts that we haven't been able to handle thus far. So certainly, with the pandemic and some of the challenges certainly coming out of, the winter break was probably the most challenging, two, two and a half, three weeks in terms of staff attendance rates and coverage and finding substitutes and so forth. And everyone sort of stepped up, and we got through that stretch. We've talked about the building subs. Those have been very much vital to the success during this pandemic, and we're certainly continuing that approach as we look to the future. So everything is certainly in line. You know, there's still a long way to go, about five months to go. But I think, and I know things are going to come up that are going to be unexpected, and we'll have some maintenance and additional staffing needs and leave of absence needs that will create additional cost that's reflected on this report. But I think all in all, we're in good standing at this point in the fiscal year. In terms of our special revenue accounts, our revolving accounts, they also are in good standing. Our food service program is performing well. You know, certainly the ability for the USDA to have extended the free school meals for breakfast and lunch throughout the school year, that's been certainly instrumental in us receiving a large amount of revenue, sort of a windfall of revenue this year because the participation has been above 50% almost every single month. And we're also taking advantage of these, this timeframe where we're also running an after-school snack program and receiving additional revenue that way by partnering with Burbank YMCA in their after-school programs. So that's typically, you would not be able to do that. You have to be an at-risk district to receive reimbursement, which yet need to be above 50% for your reduced lunch population, but that's all been waived. So we're really leveraging all areas, I think, where we can by being vigilant and looking out for all areas of revenue. And that's really helped a lot of these special revenue accounts. So all in all, I think we're in, as the report reflects, we're in solid financial standing. We're going to continue to monitor a lot of expenses as we move forward. I think what's going to be important, as we did at the end of fiscal year '21, as we approach the final quarter of this fiscal year, to look at where some of the surpluses are and have those conversations about, you know, what can we do to, to put ourselves in a good, solid financial standing in fiscal '23? How can we leverage funding by doing things to address, to make sure we're in good standing as we look to fiscal '23 and '24? Because we know, we know we're going to have some difficult decisions to make when we look at fiscal '23. So we'll have some options there when the time comes to discuss. But overall, I think we're in good standing in terms of the operating budget. The final page of the report does just summarize the major COVID-19 federal sources of funding, which were now about 1.1 million for this year, which is, again, is sizable. A lot of these funds have already been spent because they have deadline dates either at the end of August. In some, we're not planning on spending based on our budget for, pro forma planning until fiscal '23 and '24, those that stretch out that far. And then the one kind of update here that I did get clarified on from the Department of Revenue is that final line item that mentions the COVID-19 Massachusetts Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act that we've been, again, being aggressive, and I've always been much more aggressive than other municipalities, except I'm on a lot of calls. And we've already taken, received about $120,000 of revenue because we're following the guidelines and being aggressive and timely with submitting the request for reimbursement. I know communities in the area that haven't even, even tried to do it yet. So this funding's available until April 1st or until the pothole of money runs out. So you don't, it could end next week. So you get, so we've been very timely in requesting it. But I did find out that by definition, by statute, according to the Department of Revenue, it's general fund revenue. So there was a little bit of uncertainty there. We didn't know if it was going to reimburse the expense lines and come back to the school's operating budget for fiscal '22, or it's actually by statute now considered general fund revenue. So it will go, it will flow into the general fund this year, and it will certify into free cash when free cash is certified in August, September. So it will help the towns free cash, is what was confirmed.
Mr. Connolly, do you know when we're talking in finance planning, is that being accounted for in the, in the plan right now?
Uh, no, it's not. I meant to actually ask that question. I thought Liz was going to bring it up, she didn't, she didn't. But that is not, not part of the revenue plan right now.
And, and does the, that's for the school, does a municipality have the same?
So they do, and I know they've submitted one request, bulk request. We've been kind of doing it weekly. I think they looked and tried to retroactively and submitted like a large request a week or two ago. I know it certainly doesn't, not nearly as sizable as the 120, but they, it does include their, they have an additional request on top of this.
And will, will this? And and will will this will this flow through so that it can be used for the next fiscal year?
So that's a good question. That would be a Liz question. I I don't, I think it's, I think it no answer that's no, cause they have to, it's gonna certify into free cash next fiscal year based on the timing. But it's certainly, it's certainly available and it's certainly, you know, can be, uh, should be discussed at I think at one of those meetings.
We'll know the amount even if we wanted to use free cash, and then we will know that that'll be replenished into free cash.
Correct, yeah, correct.
Yeah, but that kind of limits options after that.
Correct, but I mean, again, the point would just be like, if we know one twenty's coming, we could, yeah, they they just wanna use it for a one time, they'll want to use it for one time expenses opposed to.
Right.
General.
Yeah, one time, yeah, correct.
My my only other question, Mr. Connolly, was on the student meal program, you said we're over fifty percent. What are we what are we typically at, like?
So in a given year, um, we're typically at, if you conclude the meal equivalents, so that means students that might come up and take a few à la carte items that can be classified as the equivalent to a meal. So if you include the type A lunch, which is the standard lunch, you have the hot or cold options that are on the menu for the day, as well as that meal equivalent piece, we're usually about forty percent, thirty five to forty percent.
And by usually, you mean pre COVID?
Pre COVID, correct.
Do we even remember that?
I know, I know.
Was there a pre COVID? I don't know.
So, yeah, we're we're we've reached in the sixties at times, but we're, we've been certainly averaging about fifty percent.
We, and we can, is it all prepackaged? It's not all prepackaged.
No, no, it's kind of back, it's more of the typical menu. Um, there's a hot option, um, there's some, there's still some cold option prepackaged, but we've kind of, last year it was about eighty percent, ninety percent prepackaged. This year, it's been more more typical.
You have a sense, I mean, I guess I can come up with guesses myself, but why it's so much higher? Is it the cost, is it the?
I think a lot of it is the fact that I think it's free.
Yep.
So I think the the families, you know, know it's there, it's it's free. Um, so I think it's a nice kind of, you know, ability and kind of ease to just kind of come and pick up the lunch. They know, they know that it's available to them.
Yeah.
And I think that's probably a a factor, and I think I think we just continue to try to provide a a variety of options. I think a lot of families that weren't used to getting school lunch, I like to think this, that started during this pandemic, um, because of the prepackaged, the remote meals program and the curbside meals program that we started. Lot of families had never done been part of the school lunch program, then kind of stayed stayed with it when things went returned this year, when it was back to a more normal, normal lunch program, so. But certainly, the the free, the free side of it is is helpful. Now, the USDA has not ruled on that for next year, so we're we're waiting to determine.
I'll I'll just say as a parent, when my daughter says, why don't we like the lunch tomorrow? I'm like, well, I can go buy something for you and make it for you to bring, or you can just eat a bagel and you're gonna eat a bagel tomorrow, so.
Yeah, I would think, I would think, uh, with everything else going on, being able to say, just grab the lunch at school, that's always good though.
A lot easier.
Great.
It's funny?
Sorry, I just wanted to ask, with the after school snack, is that only being done at the after school program?
Yeah, correct, it is, yeah.
Cause I was just thinking, like, the middle schools have a lot of clubs, I mean, if it's a way to, um, the middle schools have a lot of clubs, like, when they had drama and stuff, there's, like, you know, fifty kids staying till, um, I didn't know if that was something that could be beneficial, um.
Yeah, no, it's a good, yeah, we can certainly.
Who are staying after school, I think.
Yeah, we could certainly, um.
After school programs, yeah, at the higher grades.
We certainly investigate that. I think part of what we've looked at, that's come up, and we certainly is, I think it's, some of it's a challenge for us to have the staffing to stay and then not having, um, or knowing the reliability of the of the kids that will be there and actually have access to it or want to have the lunch. Sometimes it's, I think, when we have costed it out in the past, but I think it should be looked at again, it's been like the the cost to have the staff there and prepare is sort of more costly than the than the the students that would access it every day. But it's certainly, it's an, it was an easier method by just, we sort of just partnered with the after school care who were there giving the lunch out anyway, and then if by us partnering with them, then we 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 see a reimbursement and it makes their job a little bit easier. They don't have to prepare it, they just get it, they just kind of purchase it from us in a way, or or get it directly from us. So, but it's certainly something I can talk to food service, cause it's not, it's certainly not a bad, not a bad idea.
Yeah, I mean, I wonder if even if it could just be prepackaged stuff that is ready, like a snack bag for however many people the day before.
Absolutely.
Put in that they'll be there, and but the the other thing you were saying, though, is that, like, because so- some of those things were being paid by this program that in in years past, we weren't eligible for, but.
Correct.
Because of the pandemic, we're eligible for it, but I don't know, I don't know if clubs, I mean, there probably has to be a payment by the students for some of those snacks, if it's not part of the the free lunch or the free.
Yeah, the other thing, now that I'm thinking this out more clearly, the other, I think you actually have to add, to be eligible for the at the reimbursement program, the at risk program, you have to, you had to apply and receive, um, receive approval on that prior to the school year, believe it or not. So our application included the elementary schools, not not the middle school. So we could always ask for an amendment, though I don't think an amendment is out of the question.
It's not like such a, sorry, I talked out of turn, but it's not such a large amount of kids, but I just thought if you're looking for ways to be more of those, you know, I know that there are some larger, you know.
Yeah, no, it's a good, it's a good note.
I mean, I know the play just happened for middle school, but especially those groups of kids, like, that's like a big group of kids that you could, you know.
So certainly the free aspect of that, obviously, cause we used to actually, for that reason, we for a while, we actually ran the à la carte. Remember, I, it goes back, this is pre pandemic, we we were trying to, we were trying to reach that after school group, both high school and middle school, and we, through the grant, we able to get that kind of that cart on wheels. So for a while, we did staff it for like the half an hour after school, just the main street traffic and the traffic coming in and out. Um, and we thought it was gonna be a hit, it didn't take off, so it didn't, it didn't last long, but we did it for a little while. But again, students had to had to purchase it, they they, it was there for them, so.
Even if we wanted to think about next year for with the the last week or two before the show, I mean, my son was in it, and so I know they were there till six or seven most nights, so they went straight from school to drama, they were beginning home at seven o'clock at night and eating, and so, you know, it it, I mean, for for that, like, when you're staying for three, four hours after school, it might be nice to.
Yeah, absolutely.
Like, again, maybe not the entire time they're practicing, but like those last week or two that are super long. Okay, other questions on the budget update?
So there was one other piece of that.
Yeah, do you wanna go on to the student activity report?
So student activity report, um, so reflected in the packet this evening includes the report that demonstrates, shows activity through the end of quarter two, uh, which is December thirty one, twenty twenty one. So we've been able, so this reflects certified, uh, bank balances for the five school accounts, and then for the middle school and the high school, there's detail, as we normally provide to you, of the various, um, subaccounts that exist. So not not a lot of changes. I think everything is is kind of moving along. It's great to see that there's a lot more activity in these accounts this year, um, definitely at the middle school and the high school with these clubs running. And I think, I think things are certainly, uh, in good standing. I think that question that we talked about last time, I think that was more of a timing. I think a lot of it, that's sort of corrected itself.
I don't know if, I don't know if it has, actually.
So what was the, the question was, why was some balances higher than the others, correct?
The class of twenty twenty two, you typically, you see the senior class having a higher balance than the junior class and higher than the sophomore class, and if you look, the class of twenty twenty two only has twenty two hundred, class of twenty three has thirty seven hundred, the class of twenty four is forty six hundred. And so it's just, it's just used typically when we see this, the senior class has a higher amount than the junior, junior higher than the sophomore class, and it's the exact opposite this time.
Well, I mean, they're they're pretty close. They're not, they're within a thousand dollars, um, of each other. I think, I think what you'll see happen is when the major senior events start to happen and they start to sell tickets for things like the proms and, uh, senior activities, that that's gonna, that will, that will increase.
I mean, I I know, cause I know there was a fundraiser earlier this year that, you know, I think some of us had donated to where the senior, there was something for senior class. I didn't know if that went through the class of twenty twenty two, or if that's outside, the senior events were outside of that. Again, it it is what it is, I'm sure it's accurate what it what it is, I'm just, it just seems unusual that it's, that it's, the senior class has less than the junior, junior has less than the sophomores, so.
Okay.
All right, but again, no, no specific question, it was just.
Yeah.
An observation.
I mean, I can, I can ask the class treasurer and the class advisors, but no one's, no one certainly has come to me and raised any.
Yeah, they're not, we're gonna run out of money, is that, we don't, they don't think they'll have enough.
The one thing you'll know, you see the higher balance in maskers.
Yes.
So that has increased. I think that's, I believe that's the fundraising they're doing for the Disney trip that they've been doing, but I think that's why that's reflected.
Is that, is that booked, when is that booked for, do you know, is that?
Is that this April? Do you know that?
That is April.
April, yeah.
Now, now that's.
I should know that, I should know that, but I think it's April.
It's actually like, not just maskers, it's, it's, it's actually like the band and.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So that, I know that's, that was the one major change from the last report.
Yeah, and I know, I noticed that that balance is very high, and then.
I think previously, the twenty two had like a couple hundred dollars in it, so I don't think there's, I think it's gone, it's certainly increased, but maybe it's not.
And the and the and the middle school drama, so will it, will any of the, what from the last, from the middle school drama performance the other day, what will go into this account versus like?
The only thing.
Ticket sales, fundraisers, like, like the raffle baskets, what goes into here and what goes into?
So fundraising activities done by the club, so if they're doing those types of activities, if they do any fundraiser, that will, um, go into this club, the student activity club account. Any gate receipt, any, I'm sorry, any ticket sale or user fee that is paid for participation in the the musical and the play would go into the revolving account, the special revenue revolving account.
What about like play bills, advertisement, things like that? Does that go into this account or does that go?
Actually, go into this account.
Okay, so we should see a big increase there, cause I know they had the revolve, they had, they had all those, they had the play bill ads, they had the.
It should, yeah.
Raffle and the food there, okay. Questions? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Connolly. Budget update, Dr. Daly, any staffing update right now?
Not at this time.
Bids and donations?
Looks like there's none on there.
Is there one, Michael, for this one or no? It's for next, there's one for next meeting, right?
Uh, we got one today for next meeting.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Sorry.
None of this, that's fine.
Subcommittee update, finance planning team met on January twenty seventh, Mr. McGowan.
God, it feels like, it feels like a month ago. More of the same, right? We we're just, uh, looking at projections, uh, we had a three year look back and and three year projection, uh, of budgets that we that they put together. Talked a lot about revenue projections, um, still not sure why the, why the the interest on the savings interest is was so high, but that's an explanation for another day, I suppose.
Let me, just just to elaborate on that, so so in years past, we've tried to do conservative budgeting on different line items, particularly with regards to town receipts, because you you never know what it's going to be.
Yep.
But the problem is, when you are very conservative in that, you don't have a lot of revenue, and then when the true numbers come in, you have a lot of money that passes through to free cash. So every year, what we're doing is we're using one point two million of free cash that flowed through last year's revenue plan to fund the next year revenue plan. So the discussion was whether or not we should start being less conservative in the budget projection, so you don't have, because we're getting pushed back from Department of Revenue and other, you know, when we're trying to certify free cash, when you're using last year's free cash, there's a lot of problems that are created from that. So what he was, I think what they were doing is saying, if we just take the average of the last three years for these town receipt numbers, we put what that number was. One of those was interest, which we know is not gonna be anywhere near there, but there could also been some that were artificially low from the last few years.
For sure.
That could be higher.
For sure, yeah.
And so just to show what that would be and trying to get it where if you did this one, it's the same as what we were doing, but it doesn't use one point two million.
Yeah.
But.
Nope, that's a, that's a good explanation and and a good reason why it is like that.
Yeah, and I think, but I think the bottom line is.
Everybody knows what the real number is, but yeah.
Yeah, and I mean, I think the bottom line is, we probably won't be able to do it in one year, and I think also the bottom line is the bottom line, which is the the projections, that the expenses continue to rise higher than the actual revenue rises, and when we're gonna be looking at a budget, you know, where we're gonna ask for five percent more, six percent more than we've had in years past, it's gonna be hard to do that with the same revenues, because healthcare goes up seven to ten percent every year, and some other expenses go up, you know, more than the two and a half percent raise, and so it's just, it's hard to fund it every year. Sorry.
Nope, no, you're right, though, it's, uh, it it, all of that is true, and and the good news is, we have that group and a good working relationship, and we'll work out the numbers in a way that makes sense for everybody.
So we had our first revenue projection from that group.
Yep.
Which is never a good number and always makes you feel like, I mean, again, I mean.
Hopeful every year, but it's.
Yeah.
I mean, it gives us a half a percent raise and it gives the municipal side a half percent decrease, and so I don't think that's gonna be sufficient going forward, so we'll have to.
For either side.
Continue to, correct. Uh, Subcommittee Schedule, Budget and Finance Subcommittee, we have a meeting coming up, February eighteenth, I guess. Did we book that? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I believe that is booked.
I'm away, so.
Okay.
Talk about that one.
Well, we might have to reschedule that, I should go away.
Okay, all right.
Finance Planning Team, February eighteenth as well, Athletic Subcommittee is February sixteenth, and Fine Arts Subcommittee is March ninth. Administrative Report, Dr. Daly?
Just a few, uh, quick announcements.
I'm gonna die here.
Just wanted to share. Just one thing is that the, uh, Mr. Kline is leading the standards based report, there's nothing to really put up there, sorry. Uh, Mr. Kline is sharing the standards based report, he's chairing the standards based report card committee, long overdue. We we had a timeline in place pre pandemic that has been certainly disrupted, and so he's, um, engaging multiple stakeholders. The next phase of this will involve parents and the community as well, um, but they're looking at different report cards across, um, um, different communities and trying to update and align with the, um, the frameworks, um, for E L A and math and social studies and science. So, um, we are, we are looking to do that, to pilot something next year, and then to implement fully the year after that. Just wanted to share about the One Love Program. This is something that the, um, Mr. Costello brought forward to Mr. LaPret and myself. This will be a community event. Uh, the One Love Program is, uh, it's a national association, and actually, there's a, um, I believe she was a lacrosse player with the last name Love, who was, um, the victim of a domestic abuse, uh, she was actually killed, uh, through a violent, uh, relationship. And so the the community group, uh, works with, um, students and families to have conversations about safe relationships. And so this is something that, uh, it's really sort of a passion project, and it's something big in the, I believe it's big in the lacrosse community, and that's really how Mr. Costello has has been a part of this, is something he's wanted to do for quite some time. So there's a short video that, um, would be shown in the in the Performing Arts Center, and then parents would be able to come with their, uh, older, older students, um, to watch the video and have a dialogue, um, and to engage with the presenter. So I just, um, I thought that was a great opportunity, and and it looked like something that, um, you know, would be would be of interest to the community to do. Just wanted to share that out. The calendar, we did catch, uh, 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 there were two errors in the calendar, and so the the biggest one is that we always take the election day off on in November, and the date that, um, was in the calendar was a roll forward, but it was, election day is late, so a week later this year. So we, I will be sending that out just with an update. I don't think we need to, uh, re-adopt the calendar, that's my thought. We we've typically had election day off the last four or five years. It was just an oversight that the date, uh, was the wrong Tuesday, it's the next Tuesday, but I will make that very clear to people. It's correct now on the website, but I wanna send it again and make that, uh, clear. Any questions on that? Okay, and then the, uh, the last part I just wanted to share, um, we did receive, that we actually are receiving several grants that we applied for months ago. Uh, the one that I wanted to share, cause I know it's of particular interest to many in this room, um, is a financial literacy grant, and so, um, this was certainly something that the legislature brought forward and supported, and Representative Jones, uh, had had a, uh, some great, um, quotes in the transcript last week to talk about this. We received fourteen thousand four hundred dollars for our staff, um, to develop curriculum that we want to be K to twelve. So we have, uh, certainly in our, in our business, digital learning entrepreneurship classes, we have a focus on financial literacy, um, we have other opportunities such as the, um, the career fair that the juniors participate in. We really wanna see this expanded to start talking about financial literacy with children at a very young age, um, working all the way up through through high school, and so developing, we have standards for high school, um, as a part of the curriculum frameworks under social studies. So we're gonna bring together teachers from backgrounds mathematics, um, social studies, um, and just to really try to work out, um, the best ways to communicate to each other. So I think we've all seen and heard, and then how many times we said, uh, you know, I never learned that in school, I never learned about a checkbook, I never learned, uh, credit, how credit works, or 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 loans work, or, you know, all these things that we face in society, so, um, I think to have that. I think to have that as a part of our program. One of the challenges, of course, is like, where do you fit this in with everything else that we do, but I think that's part of what we're going to look at to try to be creative. So to have some of those learning opportunities and those fairs, we'd also like to engage the community, similar to what we do with the juniors, but to try to have parents or community members that are involved in the financial field to be a part of that, will be a piece of this as well. So we're excited about that.
I think you might have just answered my question, if you were going to bring outside, outside, people from outside the education sphere.
Yeah.
To teach financial literacy.
Yes.
No offense, sometimes teachers aren't the most financially literate people.
Sure.
So to, to have them teaching it.
Yep.
You might be better served with someone outside.
Sure, so that, so the, the part of what we're doing, there's a ton of resources and part, there's free programs that have been designed by companies that, that are financial companies that have programs, so some of those programs would be enacted, and also professional development for the teachers with some of these outside groups as well, but certainly through career fairs or bringing people in to, to share those things, yeah. But yeah, so it's, it's a pretty exciting opportunity, and, you know, I've reached out to some people that, that I know that are in the finance world that want to do this, or that their company sort of encouraged them to get involved, so we're pretty excited about the, that opportunity. I think it's an important part of the legislation that we're able to, you know, there were not a lot of communities that received the grant, so we're very happy to see that. We also received digital learning grants that continued from this year to next year, so we're starting to see some of those grants that we put in for in the fall coming through, so this is exciting.
Well, and I'll, I'll, I'll jump in on a couple of quick comments here. I mean, I think what you're mentioning here is the work that was done to do that grant, you know, and now it's paying off, and Mr. Connolly talked about submitting a reimbursement, getting one hundred and twenty thousand dollars back, and a lot of districts haven't done that. I just think it's really important to recognize, you know, Dr. Daley, Mr. Connolly, we don't have people that are full-time doing this, and you guys are doing a lot of extra work to try to get these funds, which, you know, again, sometimes it's twenty thousand dollars, but it adds up, it adds up, and, you know, when we're strapped and we're cutting positions that, you know, out of our, our budget request, I mean, it's a significant amount of money that you guys are bringing in with that extra work, so thank you both for all that you do. Couple other quick things that I will add here, since we didn't have a student report, just want to call out, the middle school did a great job on the, on the Descendants this past weekend, I know Notorious also won, you know, a competition or in the finals, and basketball did great at the TD Garden. And do you want to talk at all about the Charlie Jones Award, because I think that's this week, right?
Sure, it, it'll be this Friday, yeah, I've sent that out to everyone, it's, there's a virtual link for those that want to view it virtually, and Mr. Ryan Spinney is the recipient for this year, it was.
What does he teach?
He teaches social studies and, and business classes, and he also is a track coach, and he's, it was really some parents and students that came together, and I think he had seven nominations overall, was really exciting. So we have a ceremony here in the school, for folks that want to attend in person, just let me know, and we'll make sure there's arrangements made. The past recipients are going to be there to present, so I was certainly gonna, I will also present on that at our next meeting, I'll have some photographs and updates as well, the transcript's done a good job of covering it, but it's, it's very prestigious award, they, they were able to capture on video the students telling him and making the announcement, it was really pretty exciting to see that, so it's, yeah, it's, it's, it's really great to be able to, especially just with all the craziness, and everyone's under such stress, to have something so positive to talk about is always sort of a light at this point in the year, and I think that's why we do it at that time. I think also, we try to do it as close to Lincoln's birthday as possible, and so that's what we went with Friday. And just everything that I've learned about Charlie Jones, doing it at like ten forty as opposed to ten thirty is, is the way Charlie would do things, I think on his trips, he was always like ten thirty-two, or, you know. And so we also have some family and friends joining from the West Coast, and so that was able to be accommodated as well. And I just, I was going to mention also, Descendants was fantastic, the Celtics, not the Celtics, but the, the students were able to play in the Boston Garden, which was another fantastic opportunity. And really, the custodial team, just to say again, Ms. Lister gave a great shout-out, that, as Michael alluded to, was a very challenging storm, and the, the amount of time that they put in, all day Friday, coming back late Friday, early Saturday, to get this building up and running so that those kids could perform was, was a huge, a huge undertaking for this campus, and to get that up and running for not only that program, but we also had academic decathlon in this, in this space, several students did very well in that program as well, and they will be going on to compete at the next level. So we were able to do all that this weekend, thanks to their great efforts, so thank you to them as well.
One, one question on the, on the award, I will comment and a question, is this the first time we announced the nominations? The first time I saw it, and I thought that was nice, because you saw how many people got nominations, and some students nominating teachers, other teachers nominating teachers, parents nominating teachers, is that the first time that we announced who was nominated?
I don't believe so, I think it was the first time it was done that way with the three columns.
I hadn't seen it before.
Yeah, yeah, I think we did the nominees last year as well, but it's been, this is the third time that we've done it, and so that was something that we decided to do when we shared it out, and then we try to get as many of the nominees to be able to come that day, it's challenging with, you know, ten or twelve teachers, and they're all in school at that same time, but, but we will have a, a good amount of people. I think the principals at least, especially with the virtual option, can free them up to participate, so we are able to, to do that. And there is a, there is a monetary award that comes from the, the foundation that Michael and, and his team was able to facilitate, and we will be able to recognize him on, on Friday as well, so. It's definitely a distinction and an honor, and there's a nice plaque and everything down there at the Charlie Jones Way that we're able to celebrate.
Thank you. For correspondence, actually, I had one parent reach out to me and ask about parent teacher conferences, whether they would be, yes.
Oh, I was just, sorry, I was just gonna quickly say, I don't know if it's already been said here, but as treasurer of the Music Boosters, we did raise the funds to get the band new uniforms for next year, so I wanted to thank Mr. Connolly, and I'm not, is it Dr. Connolly?
Uh, Mr. Connolly, I'm not quite.
I'm gonna give him an honorary doctor.
I didn't want you to think I forgot your name, but I just, I had a second one, I'm like, I can't remember if it's Dr. or Mr. Connolly, but, so, you know, thank you for that, I think the kids are really excited, we did measurements a couple of weeks ago, and I think it'll be a really great thing as the band grows. And also to let you on school committee know that, as my daughter requested the Dungeons and Dragons Club, it's been a huge success, it's already the second largest club in the middle school by Masker, so she has really enjoyed that, and I know that it was like a big, she feels very, she felt very proud of the fact that she got that title, so thank you very much.
That's great, that's great to hear.
I heard, heard from my son that it was, a lot of people were going, he really, he really likes the science teacher that runs it, so.
Yeah, no, he has been very impressed with that teacher as well, so.
Yeah.
Can I just add one thing that might be on the mind of a lot of eighth-grade parents?
Sure.
A lot of eighth-grade parents are very disappointed the high school didn't put on an open house in person, and that it was a virtual meeting. How did the Descendants, I've been to a few plays, every single, so many talented kids in the school, and it's amazing. What was attendance like at the Descendants weekend?
I mean, they were sold out both, I think.
Full capacity?
Yes.
So we brought together parents, kids for a school play, but if there's a hundred and sixty kids in eighth grade, a hundred and eighty, let's say there's three hundred and fifty people that might have, were there more than three hundred and fifty people at the play? Probably, I don't have the capacity to remember.
Yep, yep.
The question is, why not do an open house? Why have it so non-personal for kids making a transition from middle school to high school? Why make it virtual? Makes no sense.
Yeah, I can ask Mr. Lepret that, and maybe they'll do something different in the spring than they've done in years past, to do it, I think that the timing of that, would that have been in November? Is that when that was?
It was in January, January twelfth.
I think we just had a.
That, that one, okay. Oh, you're speaking about the eighth, the eighth grade coming, I thought you meant the, the academic open house. So I, I can ask Mr. Lepret.
No answer, I'm not looking for an answer, I'm just.
Yeah.
Well, that, that was the question I got also from a teacher, about like, will parent teacher conferences be non-personal?
Yeah, I gotta email about that, too. So we are, we have a conference, we have a conferences committee coming together tomorrow night, tomorrow afternoon to begin, to talk about what this looks like. I think there's, there's certainly a parent survey component of this, we want to try to come out of this with the best model that works for moving forward. We certainly want to return to some form of in-person, you know, I'll, I'll use my own experience, my parents were able to visit my son's classroom as guest speakers, I've never been in my son's classroom, right? So it's like, I.
What school does he go to?
What's that?
What school does he go to?
In, in Boxford, Massachusetts.
In Boxford?
Yeah. So the, the conferences that they have are only during the afternoon, they don't have an evening option, so we, we're going back and forth trying to figure out what the best options would be. I will say, though, I would never be able to go to those afternoon conferences, but because there's a virtual option, I'm now able to conference with his teachers, and I think there's a lot of people that, you know, work in the city or whatnot, that would, would like to see that advantage. Again, I'm, I'm supposing I need to, we need to ask your survey, but what I'm thinking we may be able to come away with is an option to have something person on one day, and another day that's, has a virtual option, which then allows that flexibility, because I think people want both. And the, the real question is, the people that always wanted the night conference, because they couldn't get here in the afternoon, would they, would they be fine if there was a virtual, right? Because then that's, that, that trade-off, right? And I think everyone's got, you know, practices and games and things at night as well, so they, it might be easier to slip away for a fifteen-minute conference at work than